will now come to order, could I have a roll call?
John Hutzco.
Russ Smith.
Michael O'Brien.
Lori G.
John Cutler.
Craig Smith.
Great, if everyone would join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks. Okay, we have one planning board member who is not able to join us this evening, so we need to see one of our alternates. Pam, do you have ...
Excellent.
Okay, so by the hand, let's go with left tonight. Steve, if you would join us. Okay, and we have two upcoming meeting dates, one on September 2nd and one on September 16th. And we have several sets of meeting minutes to approve. And bear with me while I ... Okay, so on May 6th, it looks like just about everybody was here. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of May 6th?
So move.
And Mike, you actually were not here on May 6th.
Second.
Okay.
Not on my list. So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And Mike, you'll abstain?
I abstain.
Okay, and then on the meeting of May 20th, do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So move.
Second.
And second, all in favor?
Aye.
And it looks like we were all here. Okay. And the meeting of June 3rd, do I have a motion to approve the June 3rd minutes?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and July ... Oh, sorry. June 17th?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great. If it's all right, I haven't read the July yet, so I'm gonna hold those over. All right, the first item on our agenda tonight is a decision for Stone Ridge Common Site Plan on Route 52 and Round Hill Road. And I know at our last meeting, we were having a conversation about the inclusion of a traffic allowance for a traffic study. Have we worked that out?
Yes, we have, both in the neg deck and in the resolution, proposed resolution of approval.
Okay.
The applicant's attorney has had advanced copies of them. I understand there's no problem.
It was fine. Okay. Any other changes or discussion before I offer the neg deck? Okay, anything, Michelle, or Joe, or Brendan?
No.
Okay. Great. Then I have a negative declaration here dated August 19th, 2014, for the Stone Ridge Commons. We did a type 1 review for which we looked at the following documentation, a full EAF, supplemental part 3, and a stormwater pollution prevention plan, as well as a traffic impact study. And during our review of those documents, we identified several environmental issues as relevant. First, the stormwater quantity and pollution prevention. Second, traffic and circulation. Third, visual and aesthetics. Fourth, threatened or endangered species. And fifth, land excavation and filling. With regard to the first, stormwater quantity and pollution prevention, a detailed engineering analysis and stormwater pollution prevention plan has been submitted and reviewed, which describes the implementation of both an extended detention basin and an infiltration basin that will be utilized so that the site will have a zero discharge for storm events up to and including the 100-year storm interval. In order to achieve this objective, the stormwater basins include a component of groundwater recharge. However, to be conservative, the analysis neglects the benefit of infiltration and relies solely on storage to accommodate the various storm events. The site plan drawings and SWIP depict appropriate stormwater management practices per the New York State DEC regulations that are intended to offset any possible impact related to stormwater runoff in terms of both quantity and quality. The site is situated adjacent to a section of town that is referred to as Lake City. The nearby residents have expressed a serious concern with regard to frequent flooding of their properties even under relatively small storm events, which seems to have been exacerbated over time by all of the nearby development feeding additional stormwater runoff into the Gildersleeve Brook and, to a lesser extent, the Wicca Creek that are both proximate to Lake City. For this reason, this project was held to a higher-than-usual standard for no stormwater discharge as compared to the normal criteria of post-development being less than or equal to pre-development rates. The commercial site also receives a portion of the watershed from the original residential subdivision from which it was formed. As such, the runoff from the adjacent residential lots that is routed toward the southerly end of Round Hill Road is being captured and mitigated by the proposed stormwater basins. Accordingly, no significant adverse impacts as a result of stormwater quantity and pollution prevention are expected for this project. The second identified environmental concern was traffic and circulation. The site will generate some new traffic, although it is not considered significant relative to the total existing traffic stream on Route 52. Additionally, the proposed site plan would better accommodate pedestrians safely via the provision of sidewalks and associated pedestrian markings and/or signage. Vehicular access and egress will be provided primarily from Route 52 with some modification to the intersection with Round Hill Road and the implementation of a left-turn lane into the site from Route 52. Under the proposed project, a secondary access from Palin Road will be limited to a right ingress and a full movement egress with left turns from Palin Road being prohibited by a raised island and related signage. The applicant has commissioned a detailed traffic impact study and submitted the same for review and comment by both the New York State DOT and the Town Traffic Consultant. In terms of the Palin Road entrance, this is under the purview of the Dutchess County Department of Public Works, and both the NYD ... New York State DOT and the DCDPW will issue highway work permits for the entrance construction and the related highway work. The project also includes a subdivision and the formation of a cul-de-sac at the terminus of Round Hill Road. This was done based on input from the current residents of the Stone Ridge subdivision that expressed concern in regard to cut-through traffic and the desire to avoid co-mingling of existing residential traffic from commercial traffic that would emanate from the proposed site. The town has had ongoing communication with the New York State DOT that suggests the town contract for a detailed traffic corridor study that takes into consideration the resulting as-construed traffic impact of this development, along with future development in the immediate area of the site. Further, as a condition of approval, the applicant will fund a fair share portion of the recommended traffic corridor study. The resolution of approval will stipulate that the study be completed no later than two years beyond the date of the final certificate of occupancy so that actual facility operations and any adjacent traffic pattern growth can be accounted for within the study. And accordingly, no significant adverse impacts on traffic and circulation are expected for this project. With regard to the third item, visual and aesthetics, the proposed project is located within a highway business corridor. However, there are several residential properties in close proximity to the site, and therefore the site plan incorporates several features to reduce the potential for impacts to neighboring properties, including the use of refuse enclosures and the landscaping at the rear of the property to visually screen the site and the existing and proposed ... Visually screen the site. And the existing and proposed vegetation will act as a partial noise buffer for surrounding receptors. The architectural style of the buildings will also be compatible with the nearby residential single-family homes so that the buildings do not appear out of character with the nearby sites. The applicant will be required to enter into a legally binding agreement with the town to ensure proper maintenance and perpetuity for the landscaping and screening. In addition, the proposed illumination levels are consistent with the Dutchess County Greenway connections, and all lighting fixtures along the edge of the parking areas will be full cut off and shielded to prevent light spill over from reaching the sensitive wetland and wooded habitat adjacent to the site. As such, no significant visual impacts from this project are expected. The fourth item, threatened or endangered species, during the coordinated review, the applicant received notice from the New York State DEC that there is a potential habitat for Indiana bat in the immediate vicinity of the site and that this species may potentially be affected as a result of the proposed land clearing activities. Therefore, per New York State DEC guidance, the tree removal for any tree that is four inches in diameter or larger may only occur between the calendar dates of October 1st and March 31st. This aspect will be noted on the plans and the condition of the approval resolution. In addition, no chemicals should be used within the stormwater basins on-site due to their close proximity to sensitive wetland and woodland habitats. The New York State DEC also identified that the project may contain floodplain forest for which should ... Floodplain forest for which should be preserved where ... Which should be preserved where practical, excuse me. However, the site, as well as the adjacent residential subdivision, has been subject to prior disturbance as a result of development. The site proposes to exchange an approximate equal area in non-disturbance easement to that of a previously designated non-disturbance area, and accordingly, no significant adverse impacts on threatened or endangered species from this project are expected. And finally, land excavation and filling. The applicant has depicted a re-grading of the property in order to accommodate the proposed buildings and parking areas. The estimated net quantity of material that will be exported from the site is 6,500 cubic yards. An estimate of the number of total truck trips, around 405, and a maximum daily number of trips, 50 in any one day, are shown on the plan. The plans include details related to construction staging and sequencing, as well as provision for dust and debris control as part of the project stormwater pollution prevention plan, and as such, no significant impacts from this project in terms of land excavation and filling are expected. Do I have a motion to approve the negative declaration?
So move.
Second.
Do I have a second? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Does someone want to offer the resolution? Michael, thank you.
Town of East Fiskville Planning Board Resolution, Final Subdivision Site Plan Approval, Excavation Special Permit, and SWIP Approval. Name of the project, Stone Ridge Common Site Plan and amended subdivision approval. Name of the applicant, 1525 Route 52 Partners LLC. Location, New York State, Route 52 and Palin Road. Whereas the above application was submitted to modify the lot lines of lots 22 and 23 on filed map number 11925 entitled "Map of Stone Ridge Subdivision," dated April 7th, 2006, and filed in the office of the Dutchess County Clerk on May 22nd, 2006, and by so doing, modifying the proposed public road shown thereon. And whereas contemporaneously, the site plan entitled "Stone Ridge Commons" was filed for approval with the B-1A zoning district, allowing for three buildings, Lot 22, two-story, 12,600 square foot, and Lot 23, a one-story, 8,050 square feet, and a one-story, 3,025 square feet. And whereas a coordinated review under Seeker was conducted with the planning board, having declared itself lead agency by resolution dated February 18th, 2014, and whereas public hearings were held on May 7th, 2013, May 6th, 2014, and June 17th, 2014. And whereas on August 5th, 2014, a negative declaration under Seeker was adopted, and whereas the applicant has submitted final subdivision and site plans for approval, now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby issues preliminary and final amended subdivision approval for the above project as represented on a map entitled "Stone Ridge Commons," prepared by M.A.D. Engineering PC, dated December 14th, 2012, and revised through June 30th, 2014. Are those the right dates?
I believe so.
Okay. Be it further resolved that the planning board hereby issues final site plan approval for the above project as represented on a map entitled "Stone Ridge Commons," prepared by M.A.D. Engineering, dated December 14th, 2012, and revised through June 30th, 2014. And be it further resolved that an excavation special permit for the removal of more than 375 cubic yards of fill is granted, and the SWIP is accepted as complete, subject to this final sign-off of the town engineer. And be it further resolved that this approval is subject to the following conditions, which must be completed before the plan is signed by the planning board chair. One, the modifications set forth in the town engineer's letter of June 10th, 2014, and HVEA engineer's letter of July 31st, 2014. Two, driveway maintenance and easement agreement in format approved by the town attorney and to be filed simultaneously with the subdivision map with respect to the modification of the non-disturbance area along Palin Road to allow for a proposed driveway not to exceed 2,800 square feet, as well as extensions of non-disturbance area to include an initial 3,000 in the non-disturbance area. Three, to reduce the potential for impacts to Indiana bat, all site light fixtures should be full cut off and shielded to prevent light spill over through the sensitive wetland and the wooded habitat located adjacent to the site. Four, all the site lighting for the proposed banking facility should meet the requirements of the New York State Banking Department ATM Safety Act. Five, New York State DEC recommends that any tree greater than four inches DBH ...
Diameter.
Diameter, okay. Be removed between October 1st and March 31st. If trees larger than four inches, DBH are to be removed outside the recommended timeframe. The project sponsor should contact the department. Lisa Masai Wildlife with a phone number, as additional evaluation of the potential impacts of this state-listed species may be required. Six, common access easements to the granted ... To be granted for the driveway from Route 52. Deeds or other agreements as are necessary to modify the original proposed subdivision road with a policy of title insurance, ensuring the town with respect to the cul-de-sac and the sum of $100,000. Seven, the fair share contribution set forth in the letter of HVAC Engineering, the negative declaration is hereby set at $5,000. Said amount will be used to pay a share of the cost of a proposed Route 52 corridor traffic study. This obligation will cease if no such study is commissioned within two years from the signing of the plat. Eight, subject to the providing of appropriate stormwater maintenance agreement. Nine, subject to the final landscape review and approval. Ten, subject to the presentation of a subdivision plat with the Department of Health approval for the signature of the chairperson.
Okay. Just hold on one second. On the first page, the date of the negative declaration is August 19th. Yep. And then, Tom, item number seven does not match the neg deck.
Yeah, I don't know, so we're striking the letter of the H Hudson Valley Engineer at Park.
No, it says two years from the signing of plat, but the neg deck said two years from the final certificate of occupancy. Final certificate of occupancy would be the later date.
And the next resolve clause, it should be August 19th, because this was drafted last.
Sorry, I didn't catch where you were.
After number 11 in the next resolve.
Okay. Thank you. Tom, I know we usually have a condition that no construction commences until the plat is signed. Do we need to add that here, or do we not use that one anymore?
I think that's a no.
Okay, all right. Okay, any other changes or additions?
Yeah, well, number two, where it says 3,000, we should probably say square feet after 3,000.
An additional 3,000 square feet?
Yeah.
In the non-disturbance area, okay.
I think we had mentioned, because they're making a cul-de-sac, they need to add a no-outlet sign on the other road, Cooper's Lane.
Right. Okay, so condition 11 is ... Was it just the no-outlet sign, or were there other signs that we were putting in there?
That's the only one I remember recall.
Do you have a note on the plat for that already, the no-outlet sign?
Not for Cooper's Road, but there's also ... There's interior signs for direction once you're in the site, when you're leaving, to what restrictions are placed on the exits.
Okay, so Cooper's Road to have a no-outlet sign posted.
Laura, I do believe it's part of our comments.
Okay, great. I knew it was, I read it somewhere. Any other changes or updates?
It might be part of the agreement with the driveways, but there was also talk about a sidewalk maintenance agreement since the residents asked for a sidewalk to be added, and the DOT suggested the sidewalks.
Right, from the cul-de-sac out to 52.
There's always a ... There's typically a maintenance agreement.
And the easement agreement.
It could be part of that already.
That'll be part of the driveway easement, Tom?
You can make a driveway slash sidewalk.
Okay, so that was ... On six?
Number two, I'm sorry.
Yeah, six.
Driveway slash sidewalk. Any other updates or changes? Okay, Mike?
Be it further resolved that all of the terms and conditions contained in the negative declaration dated August 19th, 2014 are incorporated by reference herein, and be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the planning board shall cause a copy of this resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the application owner, applicant owner.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, and by John Hutzco. And votes as follows. John Hutzco?
Aye.
Russ?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
John Cutler?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
And myself, aye, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, oh, I'm so sorry, Craig, I'm sorry. I apologize, I'm sorry, I wrote down my list. All right, I apologize, Craig Smith, what is your vote?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, I apologize. Once again, the motion carries. Forgive me for that, I usually act notes ahead of time. Okay, the next item on our agenda is a discussion item for the Muse at Hopewell, 68-unit workforce housing on Route 82 and Palin Road. I'm so sorry.
That's okay, he's a big boy.
Good evening, Chairwoman G., members of the board. I'm Ken Carney, I'm here tonight with my partner Sean Carney, Jeff Cantamo, and Eric Slobom from our engineering firm of Insight Engineering. We're here tonight to hopefully advance the secret process, and we're looking to set a date for a public hearing.
Okay.
All right, thank you. So I'll turn it over to Jeff.
Hi, Jeff.
Good evening, Jeff Cantamo from Insight Engineering. Yes, Ken mentioned, we submitted to be on this evening to further our discussion relative to Seeker and hopefully schedule our public hearing. And to that end, we have provided some additional detail to the site plans and submitted some additional information. Eric's putting the rendered site plan up right now, and the layout itself really hasn't changed from the last version you saw, but some of the landscape and grading has. What we attempted to do between Route 82 and the town home units is to incorporate some graded berms to provide some earth-type buffering, and then supplemented that with some enhanced landscaping. We've worked around some existing vegetation in the center of the frontage to try to maintain that. We have incorporated some stormwater improvements in there, which we've worked around, but again, the attempt here was to further screen the town home units from Route 82. In addition, we submitted a lighting plan and a visual rendering for the project. The visual rendering took two views similar to the last application along Route 82, and as I said in my submission letter, the architect, Kapol Associates, the project architect, prepared the visual rendering, and in a matter of the available time, they were not able to incorporate all of the landscape details, but the massing of the buildings, the setback from the road, it all is based on a 3D model that they had prepared. Eric's putting up the visual rendering, which has been advanced slightly from the version that you have, and I did bring extra copies of what's up there, if you don't mind, I'll hand them out.
Sure, thank you.
These are small copies.
That's fine. If you want to hand them up to the board, we can pass them down. Thank you.
There's no traffic, so we can share them.
So you have a couple things that you'll be adding to them, but it's essentially the building.
Right, what we've done is, the version we sent you with our submission really reflected the old landscaping and grading, and what this one does is starts to bring forward the new landscaping and grading. And again, because of time, not all the details of the landscaping are in there, but I do believe it gives a very good representation of, again, the scale of the buildings with respect to the road and how the landscaping, which again is probably shown at about, I would say maybe two-thirds of the significant trees are reflected on that, but how it will work. And we believe it's greatly improved from the last versions of visual impacts that we had seen. In addition, we amended our full environmental assessment form, again, to bring all statistics with the current plan up to date. We also updated the assessment of the previous negative declaration that we've been using kind of as our guide for this project, and then made some minor improvements to the flows stated in our water and wastewater report. Again, all of these items were targeted because we believed that they did specifically relate to Seeker, and our goal was to advance that. So with that, I'm willing to answer any questions.
Okay. Any other changes to the site plan itself since the last time we saw it? It looks like the roads are still in the same location.
Yeah, the roads, parking, buildings, none of that has moved. The changes primarily revolve around grading and landscaping, as I said.
Okay. Okay. And you would intend to further update the visual renderings with the rest of the ...
If the board believes it's necessary, we would, yes.
I guess my one question, when I look at these, these trees seem mature, and I'm not sure with what's ... Are we expecting to have these preserved from what's out there now, or do you intend to do plantings that would grow into these trees?
Yeah, what's reflected on this is proposed trees, and those trees are probably about five years out, would be my guess, compared to what I think we have specified. What's not shown in view B yet is, right on the corner of 82, there is a stand of trees that are mature and significant that will remain in that location. Also, there's some evergreens that have been very specifically located that aren't yet reflected on the visual rendering. So again, yes, the ...
And the exit road is not reflected.
Excuse me?
And the exit route, the ...
The emergency exit? Yeah, in view A, excuse me, in view B, on that left corner, we thought, yes, you would catch that. Again, the nuances of that stuff have not been incorporated in yet.
Okay.
And we can continue to develop it if you desire.
And while I know it wasn't your intent, I think if you go back into view A, by not depicting what's currently there on the other side of the road, it does kind of conjure up this image that of a lot more green than I think is really there, but I realize that was not your intent.
Right, right. Yeah, the architect, you know, what they do is they make a 3D model of the buildings, and then they take our topographic map and introduce the 3D of the grade in with that, and that's what forms like the core of the model. The landscaping, you're absolutely correct. There are wires out front, there are utility poles that'll break all that up. That's not shown in this because to advance those details is very tedious and time-consuming, but you're absolutely right.
This one looks like it's going in Kansas.
Right, right, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're only reflecting what's on our side of the road, that's a good point.
Okay. Well, I'm not sure you need to fully reflect what's on the other side of the road. If you change the view to actually be at the road itself, you wouldn't have, you wouldn't have kind of that green in front.
Right.
So once he's built it, if you're able to kind of tweak that and show us less of the other side of the road and more of your site, I think that makes sense. And utility poles is a good point, that was, I knew there was something else there that we had seen in the actual photos that wasn't showing, so that's ... Is he able to just overlay the existing site picture or photo or something like that, or provide the existing photo from the same vantage point, just something to show, here's what it looks like now, here's what it's going, just to ...
Yeah, with what we had submitted to the board with our package, we did show existing conditions photos, so that is in the packet that we submitted. What program he's using and what techniques he's using, I am not familiar with. The idea of taking an existing photo and photoshopping new or proposed improvements in there is something that actually we've done in very specific instances, but again, it's quite tedious, and we can talk to him and see what's involved there. But I think the intent here is to show that, you know, what we're going to develop in terms of a landscape plan and the setback of the buildings and the building architecture and styles, I do think we've established that, you know, we have a very good starting point to be sure that we're not having any kind of significant visual impact, and that's really where we're headed with this, and we are willing to work with the details with the board and the consultants.
Okay. Michelle, I guess my only, my only initial question is, this is showing the more mature landscaping versus what would actually happen when it's first constructed. So is that, I mean, is there, is there a reason to show, maybe just take all the layers of actual trees out and show here's what the buildings would look like if there was no landscaping, and then say this is what it'll look like at five years or something like that versus ...
I suppose you could probably ask your architect to do that, to show it.
I mean, that should just be layers that they can move or something, rather than adding a lot of ...
Yeah, we could, we could show you a, I'll call it a bald version with no trees, which is just the topography in the buildings, then we could introduce one with the smaller trees and then show you five years out. And again, one of the things I'll point out is, when we bring the trees down, we're going to add the other trees in, and I think we're going to get to a similar effect, and that's where we went. But yes, we can do that.
I just, I don't want to leave an impression that day ... I just, I don't want to leave an impression that day one, this is what you, you're going to see. I think that this, this is probably what you'll see a few years in, but it's not day one.
Correct. Correct, you are, you are correct.
Okay. Okay. Michelle, anything else you would recommend for the, the visual renderings?
Um, no, but I haven't had a huge amount of time to digest them because I need to, also, I wanted to share the landscape plan with the landscape architect.
Okay.
So I haven't done that yet because it was still sort of moving target, but now that we have it, I can, I can share it with her and get her comments.
Okay.
Um, I did want to mention, I, I don't know if Jeff's even seen this yet because I just found in our packet, we got a, a letter from DEC today. Did you see it?
Yes, I did.
Yeah, okay. And I think it's, they're fairly minor comments, just some clarification of a few things.
Yeah, the, the E.C., from our perspective, the D.E.C. made some very pointed comments in improving our mitigation plan with some very specific notes requiring licensed people, also making sure that, you know, our mitigation is, um, complete in the, in the sense that they'll ultimately be looking for and we're very much agreeable to all of the recommendations, so.
Okay. So you had a chance to read the letter that they sent?
Yes, we did.
And for board members, we had a copy of it in our packet for this evening. Okay. And Michelle, you didn't see anything that was-
I, no, I don't see anything that's, um, that's a concern. I mean, I think some of it is just because of the, initially they had comments from the D.E.C. that they, that applied to the previous, um, application and so we resubmitted the plans and the, the habitat assess, updated habitat assessment to D.E.C. and there's been a few tweaks based on the tweaks that were done on the site plan and also just some semantics because, uh, it originally said, um, something about capturing landings turtles or whatever and she just wanted to make sure that it was stated in there specifically that you can't capture them without a special license to do so and things like that.
Okay.
But it was nothing, I don't think that will, that will change anything.
Okay.
Just needs, um, you know, some plan updates and some, some minor plan updates with notes.
Anything else with traffic that we should go over?
I think the only thing that's, uh, that's outstanding, which I don't anticipate being an issue is, uh, just the complete, uh, you know, truck, uh, truck tracking diagrams. Um, the applicants indicated they'll, uh, include them in a future submission. They did include, uh, you know, partial, uh, tracking last time. Uh, we don't see an issue with, uh, a few little tweaks that we asked for, uh, just a matter of getting the plan updated.
Okay. But nothing that would hold up setting a public hearing?
No.
Michelle, I'm sorry, I should have asked the same.
No.
Okay. And then from engineering?
No, our technical review is kind of ongoing as they continue to submit, um, information. Um, we had a couple, uh, additional comments, um, but nothing that would, that should hold up, uh, continuing the Seeker or, um, the public hearing.
Okay. Great. John, anything on your end?
I can, yeah.
Okay.
All, uh, all issues were worked through.
Okay. Any questions or comments from board members then before we schedule the hearing? Okay. Upcoming meeting dates, we have, um, well, September 2nd, which you don't have enough time to advertise for, um, the 16th, you could make if you think you can get the mailing out, Pam, I'm going to say by Thursday or Friday.
Friday.
That would give us the 25 days?
Yeah, we, we can get it. Is, is there a return receipt mailing? Yeah, we, we would have no problem with that.
Sign on the property.
Okay.
Yeah, you have to get the sign up as well. Okay. Um, so if there's no other questions or comments, do I have a motion to schedule the Muse at Hopewell for a public hearing on September 16th?
So moved. Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. September 16th, just please work with Pam and the planning office to make sure that everything gets mailed out in time and for the signs.
And, uh, as far as Seeker goes and moving forward with that, um, is that something the board can act on this evening or how does that get integrated into our future plans?
I think what we do is have them consider that at the night of the public hearing.
Okay.
Right.
Fair enough.
Right. If we have a public hearing first.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll see you on the 16th.
Thank you.
And Pam, we'll talk to you tomorrow. Okay. Thank you very much.
All right. Have a good evening, gentlemen. Okay, the next item on our agenda is a public hearing for the Hopewell Sports Dome site plan on Auditorium Drive and Route 52. And this includes a two-lot subdivision between Brightland Solar and Hopewell Sports Dome. Pam, do we have everything we need to be able to open the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. And I know we're, we're setting up here, but do I have a motion to open the public hearing for Hopewell Sports Dome site plan?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
As I've learned, you got to lean into the microphone when you do that. Keeps that advantage.
I like that we're all engaged and listening. That's awesome.
By the way, the gentleman leaving, they have all these documents, right? All the letters that were generated?
He said he did.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, if not, Pam can double check them tomorrow. So send me out the factors.
Reinjure your leg.
That's all we need.
Please don't.
Please don't. Please be careful.
The technology is working. We're all set.
Okay. Excellent. So if you'd like to start off by just giving us an overview of, of what the proposal is, this is our initial public hearing, um, from the planning board's perspective, so we just want to make sure that anyone that's here from the public or who might be watching tonight just has a good sense of what we're proposing here and then I think there's probably a few items you want to cover in more detail, but if you could do the overview first, that would be great.
Okay, absolutely. First, let me say good evening. My name is Steve Feinstein. I'm the attorney for the Sports Kingdom Project. Uh, we're super happy, pleased, and excited to be here tonight. Obviously, it's been a long road to get to the public hearing and, um, unfortunately, Dan Fraoli, who's, uh, along with Russell Hernandez, the two, uh, people who are most responsible for this project, Dan's son had surgery this afternoon down in New York City. I'm happy to report he's okay. Um, he's actually, hasn't woken up from the anesthesia yet. Dan was going to leave as soon as he did. We spoke to him a few minutes ago, said, "Deal with that." Uh, Dan views this project like his fourth son, so when I said, "Take care of your family", he thought that meant come on up here, so, but he's, he's hopefully going to stay there. But, uh, along with Steve Trinkus from Trinkus Engineering who'll go through some of the details, we also have Dan's father, Dan Fraoli Senior, and, um, Dan is the chairman, he is the founder, uh, he is, we call him the godfather of the air structure industry. So, um, he'll be a wealth of information concerning the actual air structure, so we'll be able to, to, to answer any of those questions and, and get a, a full understanding of the air structure. And of course, uh, Russell Hernandez, who along with Dan are the brains behind this, this project, uh, Russell is, uh, runs Atlantic State, a, a very, uh, well-known, uh, and an excellent construction firm, so in addition to being a principal, uh, Atlantic State will, if all goes well, be the, uh, general contractor for the project. So we have a lot of construction expertise, obviously the air structure expertise and Steve with respect to the engineering, so we'll, we'll use those folks tonight to the extent necessary to give everybody a complete understanding of, uh, the Sports Kingdom Project. As, uh, some might know, this is a, a project that is, um, uh, aimed at children and for that reason, uh, we think it is, um, the type of project which, um, there should be more of and there certainly is a, a need for this, uh, in, uh, not only this area, but this part of the state, this part of the country. I noticed a, uh, a sign on the door of the Rec Commission that says, "Kids and sports, stay out of courts." And, um, uh, as corny as that may be, uh, it is one of the reasons why this project exists. Uh, it is a sports and recreation project and as a sports and recreation project, it's geared towards children primarily. Uh, and, uh, I, I, hopefully we can all agree that sports does provide in almost every instance, a great opportunity for kids, uh, to find a healthy alternative to some of the other things that are out there. Um, and so we, we echo the, uh, the Rec Commission's, uh, sense of, of kids and sports, stay out of courts. It's also good from a timing perspective. I know, uh, some of you may have been watching and reading about the Little League World Series that's going on. Uh, I know the young girl, 13-years-old, Monet Davis, uh, got a lot of publicity a couple of days ago. I think she pitched a two-hitter, uh, against all the guys. Nobody could touch her, her fastball and, and, um, you know, that's, uh, that's the, uh, the, the result of, of, of great coaching and great dedication, obviously a lot of talent, but those are the, those are the kids that, uh, that we hope will, uh, participate, uh, and may be fortunate enough to have a, a local team, uh, make it all the way, uh, to the, uh, to the World Series. Okay. All right.
That was a Nobel model.
I have a real brief little slide presentation that helps give an overview.
Oh, you know, that's, it's on the last slide, that's why. It helps if you click on the first slide to do the slideshow. There we go.
There we go. Okay, very good.
First to the last slide right there.
Um, the, uh, the cornerstone of the project is this air-supported structure, uh, 468 feet and width 740 feet long and at its highest most point here in the center, 160 feet high, and it's known as an air-supported structure. And, um, and we'll talk a lot about what that means, uh, but inside the air-supported structure, um, are going to be, uh, four Little League baseball fields and four, uh, multi-purpose sport fields, soccer, lacrosse, uh, those sorts of fields. And I'll show you a number of slides with, uh, some of the details. In addition, there are going to be two high school-sized baseball fields depicted here and two Little League-sized baseball fields depicted here. Now on this, uh, rendering here is a fifth baseball field, a Little League baseball field, which I'm showing here and, um, as, as has recently occurred, um, that field has been removed, um, and, uh, as Steve Trinkus will talk about in some detail, it was done in order to try to accommodate, um, uh, additional water runoff concerns, uh, that, uh, were expressed to us and, um, so, uh, we're happy to sacrifice that field for what'll be a detention basin. And so it's four outdoor fields, two high school-sized, two Little League-sized, uh, and then under the basic setup, it'll be four, uh, baseball fields inside and four, uh, of the, uh, all-purpose sport fields, uh, over here. Um, what we have here is a, a, a photograph that probably a lot of folks here are familiar with, uh, looking at the site over here from the traffic light on 52 and the entrance road here. And we put this in the slideshow so that we could, and I don't know without it being too dark how easy it'll, it'll be to see, but, uh, the artist's rendering then depicted that same corner, uh, after the air structure is up and inflated. And if you can see on the perimeter of where I'm pointing now, that's the, um, oh, thank you, that's the perimeter of the air structure, uh, as seen from that, that corner. Uh, and similarly, we have a couple of other, uh, views, uh, we'll call them before and after views, uh, same location, street view, same location, uh, air-supported structure here. Um, from Lake Drive, we have the same thing, we have the photograph here and then here's the photograph, uh, once the air structure is completed and you can see it right over here where I'm pointing now. Um, the, at, at its top height, we mentioned it's 160 feet, but one of the things that we've experienced, and I've, I've, uh, worked for ASADI now for about 20 years, um, and, uh, they've, uh, they've built air structures all over the world of all various shapes and sizes and one of the things that we've learned, uh, is that, uh, the height of the air structure, um, is different in terms of how it's perceived by the eye, how people perceive it, than a fixed wall structure of the same height. And that's because of the fact that the shape slowly rises to the maximum height as opposed to a fixed building where it reaches that height for the entire shape of the building. And so it will seem smaller, it will seem less intrusive, uh, to the eye than a fixed wall building and this, uh, gives you a chance to see, uh, the difference, how quickly the conventional building reaches the height versus the, uh, time it takes for the, uh, air structure to reach that height and that's due to its unique shape. In this rendering, you get a chance to look through the top of the air structure, uh, at the, what we'll call the standard setup, uh, which we expect to, uh, be the, the standard setup in terms of how the fields are set up from day one. And what you see here are the four, uh, Little League-sized baseball fields. Uh, here's home plate in each one in the corner here and the outfield for each field is here. This is the, what we call the clubhouse and we'll have a, we have a number of good photographs and renderings of what that's going to look like. Uh, that'll include a, uh, some batting cages, some, uh, check-in areas, uh, some retail locations, uh, some spectator areas and a, uh, and a small restaurant snack bar. And back here are the four, uh, fields for all sport play. Um, and again, there'll be a slightly better rendering of that coming, but this gives you a long view of what, of what that looks like. Uh, here without the, uh, without the dome, uh, on top, you get even a clearer view of the four fields on the standard setup, the clubhouse area, uh, entry being right here into the, uh, this part of the clubhouse and then the area for the, uh, four soccer fields or multi-sport fields that can be used for, for any sport. Uh, this is a, um, uh, cut sheet for the three decks of the clubhouse. Um, it's a little hard in this to, uh, glean a whole lot, uh, you'd have to be able to read the architectural plans, but essentially the main entry floor will have check-in areas and administrative offices, uh, it will have some retail space, uh, and, um, on the second floor, you have the eating establishment, the restaurant area here, um, and then eight batting cages, uh, depicted here. And the third floor is for, um, essentially for viewing, uh, of, of the activities, um, that exist. And there'll be some good views of that. Uh, again, from, from top down, uh, looking at the upper, uh, deck of the clubhouse, uh, where there'll be, uh, a viewing for, uh, for friends and family that would like to come and watch some of the sports that are going on here. Um, these are two of the four baseball fields, the other two would be down here and here are the four, uh, multi-purpose sports fields depicted in that cut. Um, here we get a better look at the clubhouse, which, um, we're super proud of. Um, obviously, uh, there's going to be, um, some wonderful areas throughout, including here for some stadium-style seating for people that want to sit there as opposed to stand in the upper areas. Uh, here are your batting cages, uh, your restaurant area here, administrative offices and retail, uh, down on the, on the lower area. Again, a long view looking, uh, across some of the fields. This is the, uh, proposed restaurant area here. Again, you can look right out from there. Uh, here are your batting cages over here, retail and administrative offices, check-in areas down on the lower level. Uh, these are stairs that go across on both sides and then on the upper area, the, uh, area for viewing. Whoa, whoa. Stop. Okay, let me go back here. Okay. Close-up of that same area, here's the, uh, proposed restaurant area, uh, check-in desk, see-through to both sides, um, and some stadium seating, uh, over here and here's your walking area where you can also, uh, view the, uh, activities on the field. This is from the, uh, the clubhouse area, here's your center check-in area, um, uh, and, uh, on this side over here, some of the retail space that's proposed. Uh, from the restaurant seating area, you can look out both sides, uh, to watch, uh, and, um, you know, this is a, a restaurant that's really intended to provide food for, uh, the kids, uh, and some of the spectators that are there during the games. Um, we don't expect people to come here to eat, uh, as a destination spot for food. Um, and I'll talk some more about, uh, some of the, the benefits of the project, uh, to the community, including some benefits to local restaurateurs. Um, but, um, there are, uh, opportunities to serve, uh, food to the, uh, to- But there are opportunities to serve food to the kids and some of the spectators while they're there. And so that's what's proposed here. Again, from the area of the batting cages, again, some of the stadium-style seating so you can watch the activities. And then folks can do batting cage warm-ups in this area here. Another view of that same area, the stadium-style seating, the restaurant over here, and batting cages behind. This is a great shot. You can see the walking areas, again, the steps up to the upper walking areas where you can watch both sides. Batting cages in this area here, restaurant in this area here, and obviously below deck, your administrative offices and some of your retail. Some layout configurations. As I indicated earlier, this is the standard field layout, the one that we expect to be our standard field. This is the way the fields will be set up from day one, the way they'll be lined. These are all astroturf, or what's commonly called astroturf, turf fields. There's no dirt, it's just astroturf that's colored beige to look like dirt. These are some warm-up areas for some of the baseball teams. And these are the four-field configuration for baseball. I think it's really important to point out that the unique part about this project is the dome, and it's the ability to bring these sports as they're played outside, inside, during foul weather. And so the dimensions of the dome are specifically chosen so that these fields will provide completely unfettered ball play. In other words, there's no wall to hit that's considered a double, there's no ceiling to hit that says it's a foul ball. It's going to play just like any outdoor facility, both with respect to width and with respect to height. And that was a critical design characteristic for the structure. And then here you have the clubhouse that we've been looking at some renderings of. And here are the four multi-sport fields as originally set up. These fields are 104 feet by 210 feet. So, of course, these are not, you know, full-size soccer fields or full-size football fields. But for youth sports, these are wonderful-sized fields where any of those sports can be played and can be practiced. Whoop, there we go again, Steve. You've got such a sensitive button. Okay, so let me go past here. Alternate field layout includes taking the two, the four multi-sport fields and using them as two additional baseball fields. Even though these would be lined as multi-sport fields, we can change them by having temporary lines put in with a sort of a paint product that goes in and changes the field. This would be one alternative field for this size. Of course, another alternative is the 12-sport, 12-field multi-sport configuration where there are no baseball fields. And using the same 104 by 210 configuration, you can add eight of those fields over here for lacrosse and soccer and similar field sports. And of course, this configuration puts the two fields for baseball and the eight fields for multi-sport. And this is one that I wanted to make sure that we showed because here you have the four Little League baseball fields and what essentially is a full-size football field, 195 by 430, including the end zones. So it gives you a little bit of sense of scale. The four, you know, youth-sized fields would comprise one full-size field. And again, with appropriate temporary lining of the fields, this can be accomplished. And the 195 by 430 could also create three fields for field sports on a full-size basis. Like to talk a little bit about hours of operation. The Monday to Friday, now this is fall, winter, and spring, using this standard field configuration, which is sort of our base. Monday to Friday, we refer to it as league, play, and practice. We anticipate it going from about 3:30 in the afternoon after school until 1:30 a.m. Now, obviously, in the evening, the youth aspect of this is going to stop. The kids are going to do their homework, and they're going to get ready for bed. What we anticipate during the later hours is using some of these fields for adult play, both male and female, baseball, softball, soccer, and those sorts of things in the later evening. The Saturday and Sunday configuration is when you would have tournament play. And of course, tournaments are a big part of the proposal, a big part of the plan for a facility like this. Both Dan and Russ have children who have, for years, participated in these tournaments. And they've traveled throughout a big part of the country, going to the facilities that exist that provide these kinds of fields. They're all outside, none of them are inside. And so they quickly came to realize that kids in this area are not given the benefit of great weather in the wintertime. And so having these fields inside and allowing tournament play in the fall, winter, and spring without regard to snow and flooding rains is something that was desperately needed in the Northeast. And so for tournament play on the weekends, early start time about 7 o'clock, and again, it says 1 a.m., the tournaments, et cetera, will end earlier because of the age. And then, again, you'll have availability for the facility to be rented to adults in the later hours. For summer hours of operation, from Monday to Sunday, so for the full week, it's anticipated that it would be a 7 a.m. start and, again, about a 1 a.m. in the morning finish. Under the standard field layout, there would be a number of tournaments that are played in the summertime where travel teams are able to travel with their families to the facility and participate in both baseball and multi-sport tournaments, which, again, is an enormous part of the model here for this kind of facility. Speaking of the model for this kind of facility, I have several slides dealing with some of the beneficial impact to the town and to the area of this kind of facility. I don't know that it's news for anybody, but we thought we'd take a moment just to give you some specifics. In 2010, the National Association of Sports Commissioners estimated that American families spent $7 billion traveling to youth sports tournaments during 2010. I tried to get some updated information, and they're apparently in the process of updating it, so it wasn't available as of 2013 or '14. But $7 billion four years ago, I'm sure it's higher than that. I know Russell and Dan have contributed mightily to that $7 billion. If any of you have had the privilege of staying in hotels and motels in various cities around, you know you find sports teams like these in lots of those hotels and lots of those motels. And what they're doing is they're traveling to sports tournaments. And whether they're soccer players or lacrosse players or baseball players and every other sport you can think of that's played on a field, it's a great experience for the kids, it's a great experience for the families. And what it does is, is it provides an enormous growth engine for the communities that are fortunate enough to have these kinds of facilities in their area. Some of the demographics we were able to find, National Sporting Goods Association, there were 280 million children between 7 and 18 years of age that participated twice a week in 17 sports activities. They also estimated that 26.9 million children participated in baseball. And I have some baseball, softball statistics to share with you. The United States Sports Specialty Association does a lot of these surveys. Team rosters had grown from 1,000 in 1997 to 40,000 in 2007 with respect to baseball. And it's grown quite a bit since 2007. It is not, in any way, shape, or form, a dying sport at the youth level. By way of example, 2.2 million players played on 7,000 teams in Little League baseball. There were 60,000 players playing AAU baseball and 1,800 youth baseball training camps in the United States as of 2010. And I wanted to put up three baseball facilities that some people may be familiar with, especially if you have kids of that age, of the Little League age. Because these are sort of the three diamonds of baseball-type facilities, and certainly facilities that, from the baseball side of this, we certainly want to be the equal of. In a lot of ways, we think of ourselves as a notch above because all of these facilities, while spectacular and beautiful, none of them, as you can see, have indoor facilities. These are all outdoor-only facilities. Cooperstown Dreams Park and two Ripken, Cal Ripken facilities, one in Aberdeen, Maryland, and one in Myrtle Beach, South Carolina. Myrtle Beach, South Carolina will have a longer warm season. Aberdeen, Maryland, slightly longer than ours. Cooperstown Dream Park, obviously, the weather's not great there for a long period of time. So none of these facilities can offer what we're proposing for the poor weather. But as I indicated earlier, the number of hotels and motels and restaurants that have sprung up in these areas, whether it's Myrtle Beach, Aberdeen, Maryland, or Cooperstown, because of the baseball tournaments that are played there all summer long, is extraordinary. I could have 30 slides just depicting that. And the point of that was to be able to emphasize that what we believe is certainly the case, and that is that a facility like this would bring a great positive effect, both locally and regionally, financially. We're talking about not just jobs in the construction of this facility, not just permanent jobs in the operation of the facility, which there are north of 60 of those, but also the fact that when families come to the facility, and they will come from a large circumference around this region, they bring their money, and they bring their minivan, and they bring some kids that are participating and some kids that are too old or too young, and they stay for several days, if not longer. And they eat at local restaurants, they stay in local hotels, they shop in local stores. These are all benefits, economic engine drivers, if you will, for the local economy. There's local and state sales taxes, and so there's a great benefit to the local economy. I found some real interesting anecdotal evidence of just how great it can be. In the Greensburg Daily News in Decatur County, Georgia, where they have a nice facility, again, all outdoors, a single weekend baseball tournament would bring as much as a half-million dollars in revenue to the community. And that's from one weekend. Obviously, they go to the various attractions that exist. Now, some exist in the immediate area, and hopefully some will be added to the area. That's what we hope to be able to help drive over the course of the next few years. Frank Brown Park, for those in the baseball world know about a place like this, this is a, I believe, an eight- or nine-field, outdoor-only facility. In 2013, it was reported that the eight tournaments that they had each year generated $7 million of local revenue. And certainly, we would expect an analogous revenue driver from a facility like ours. It's not limited just to the summertime, and it's not affected by foul weather. There are several outdoor fields clearly in our plan, but inside, the fields are unaffected by weather, and the tournaments can go on. And that helps people commit to those tournaments, they know they're going to get their games in. Rehoboth Beach, Delaware, I was there a couple of weeks ago. The tourism manager, Steve Miller, said that for 2013, the economic impact from their tournaments run at this facility here, which is a baseball facility, was 17.5 million dollars for 2013. Again, we would expect, to analogize, to similar numbers. Again, this is an overview of the site. This field, as Steve will indicate shortly, has been dropped in consideration of a detention basin. And so what I'm going to do at this juncture is turn it over to Steve. He's got the site plan, and he can put that up on the screen and run through some of the more particulars of the project.
Great.
While I just get set up, I'll introduce myself. My name is Steve Trinkus. I'm a licensed professional engineer from Connecticut. I have received permission from the New York State Department of Education to practice for this particular project for a three-year period by using my Connecticut seal. Trying some slightly different technologies, since you have the technology, this hopefully will be a lot easier to use. As Steve has pointed out, the site in the dome area here is this outline of green, and you can basically see these are kind of what the roof break lines would be from the corners to the top. So really, the top peak does not extend the whole length of the dome because it slopes up from either side. There's two entrances from Route 52, the western entrance here, which has a right turn only for traffic coming east on Route 52, and then the combined entrance here with the traffic light, which is, I believe, not utilized at this time. The eastern entrance also has that right turn only in, and then it only, it has a coming westbound, you can make a left, and only a right turn going out. So we have two access points for it. As everyone is aware, this was part of the IBM complex, larger share of the IBM complex is on the other side of John J. High School, which is here. There is a series of buildings on the site. There's four here. This building is in the process of being demolished by the current owners, Brightland Solar. Stormwater management is a large concern, as it was on the project you discussed earlier tonight. The majority of this site drains to the north. It's pretty much a divide through the middle, and the water comes out to two points. There's two existing basins in the northeast corner of the site, one outlet structure, and then it ties into the Route 52 drainage and goes to Gilder Sleeve Brook. Our initial proposal was modifications of the western basin of the two to increase the size of it, to address water quality, and also to provide higher levels of peak rate attenuation by putting in a separate outlet structure here. At the current time, there is a pipe between the two basins that's set dead level, so it operates, even though there's two basins, it operates simply as one. We were able to meet the requirements of the New York State Stormwater Manual for peak rate attenuation from the two-year storm up through the 100-year storm with this configuration. Through various meetings with Joe Dennis from Morris Associates and Scott Bryant and Rick Witt and John, you know, who provided the historical drainage data from the IBM design and the concerns of runoff running to the north towards Lake City, and asked us to look into diverting flows away from Lake City area and taking them to the west. There is one western detention basin right here. It's located west of the existing substation. It's on land owned by Brightland Solar. As Steve pointed out, this is the area of the former fifth baseball field, which we've now converted to a pond. The King Dome project in and of itself would add 13.09 acres of impervious cover to the site. At the present time, the drainage area that goes towards Route 52 is just over 97 acres with 33.7 acres being...
I'm sorry, the fields. Are you counting the fields?
I will, I'll get into that in a second.
Because I'm struggling with adding that much impervious surface.
Well, the 13 acres of impervious cover is the hardscape. It's the dome roof, it's the parking, it's the sidewalks. However, in the model for the detention ponds, because turf fields are an infiltrative surface, and we have Class D soils on the site which basically do not infiltrate, the fields were modeled as impervious. So we're looking at a worst-case scenario, but from a landcover type, they're not impervious, but they were modeled as such in the stormwater plan. So we're accounting for that in there.
Because I thought a large part of where the dome is going is already paved.
Well, no, there's two existing parking lots, a portion of one right in here, and then on the eastern side here. This is where actually... This is where actually fields are going, but the dome itself is located in the meadow and into the initial wooded area on the western side of the site. There's a paved road, an old road, that kind of comes in here, and it's a little bit of wooded in that area, and that's where the dome is. But, it's, the small areas of pavement are really not a lot.
I apologize, because I thought there was parking, at least an access road that was on...
Yeah, no, we're really, the dome only overshadows a small existing pavement area. So, what we looked at doing by eliminating this baseball field was now, we can divert all of the water from what we term the western side of the site, which drained out through the site to a 48-inch pipe to this basin. We can divert this whole watershed area, which is 28.7 acres. I can also take a portion of the dome site and the parking area here on the west to this basin. So, what we can divert away from Lake City is 32.6 acres of drainage area, including 15.4 acres of impervious cover. So, we are actually going to have a net reduction of two acres less going towards Lake City than currently exists. Because of the outlet structure here, besides providing the detention requirements per the New York State manual, one of my area's expertise is green infrastructure, low-impact development, and we also provided significant attention for the water quality storm event and also the one-year rainfall event. Now, those are not required by the New York State manual, but they also constitute the about 90% of the annual rainfall events we have. So, by attenuating those, it's a significant improvement to those basins. So, from this particular basin, we will be then conveying the runoff through a new drainage pipe to an existing manhole on the Brightland Solar property, which then drains under the substation to the existing pond facility. So, we're going to take all that water and go that direction with it. So, it will be a significant improvement, you know, to the drainage situation on Route 52 and north of it towards Lake City. This runoff will all go to the Wicca Peak, Wicca Peak Creek. The eastern portion of the site actually gets reduced because these areas, the fields for the dome, instead of being conveyed to this existing basin, will be conveyed to this one. So, the existing, what I call the northeast basin, is only going to handle the runoff from the portion of the Brightland Solar property that's south of us. So, again, we're reducing the drainage into that. Now, the fields will be, they will be lit, the outdoor fields, the larger fields have 70-foot poles by Musco Lates with the currently proposed metal halide lights. The smaller baseball fields are 60-foot tall because they're smaller. We have submitted a complete lighting plan that basically has these type of downdraft, downpointed lights. When you're 10-foot behind the pole, you're basically in darkness. So, they, and also, Musco is actually, I met with them about a month ago, they have now developed LED lights for outdoor fields that are even more focused and have less spillage than the current ones. So, the technology is a significant improvement for that. The majority of the parking is in the front of the site. Auditorium Drive, which is the connection road between the two north-south roads, we have multiple parking lanes coming in. This was a suggestion by your town staff. And then, we have an entrance coming in here that intersects all of these, so that we have multiple ways in and out. After meeting with the fire advisory board, we originally had parking along the front of the dome, kind of in-facing to the dome. We eliminated that, so that we have a 20-foot-wide snow shelf, because the snow will slide off the dome. We have drainage there, so that rainfall or snowmelt goes into a conventional system. And then, we have a dedicated, we will have a hatched fire lane, 15-foot wide, which is a no-parking zone. In front of the entrance, there is an area for drop-off of people. It's three cars long. I went to the Danbury facility, and they actually have a drop-off area that holds two cars. We also, in looking at the park, and we had numerous discussions with your town staff and consultants, the current regulations propose parking spaces that are 10-foot wide by 18-foot deep. And in virtually every other municipality I've worked in, and what your consultants also said is, you know, the standard space is really 9 by 18 or 9 by 20 for most part. Brendan asked me to check what the Danbury facility is, and they're 9-foot wide for their standard spaces, and they actually have compact spaces, which are 8-foot, which we're not proposing here. So, what we did is, the front parking lot, which is the majority of the parking, is proposed as 9 by 18, and that will be a request of the zone change. But, the parking on the western side of the site here, these have stayed 10 by 18 at the request of Scott Bryant. Scott was concerned with the larger SUVs, the Suburbans, the Ford Excursions, et cetera, of not fitting in a 9-foot-wide space, although they seem to fit in other ones. So, we've left those parking spaces there. We originally proposed, the current plan's, 288 parking spaces on our site. The applicant also has a lease agreement from Brightland Solar for another 500 spaces in these three areas that are shown as blue for overflow parking. So, we will have a total of 788 spaces. In meeting with Scott last week before he went off on his vacation, we originally, these islands were a little bit larger, and he's, he and Brendan actually asked about, could we shrink, could we increase the parking out front by shrinking the islands down? So, I was able to just do that today, and I believe I get four, let's see, four, eight, 12, 16, I think roughly 25 more parking spaces by doing that. So, we still will have our landscaped islands, but we will add 25 more spaces, you know, to the plan. We also, around the dome, there is a snow shelf, and we, meeting with the fire department, we were able to show that their hook-and-ladder truck, their largest vehicle, has full access. We have an entrance here, which allows them to pull straight in. The pavement is wider on the backside of the dome to allow them to make a 90-degree turn. On the northeast corner of the dome, this travel lane, again, lines up perfectly with a snow shelf, so they could really come in either way and meet at this corner, basically, if they wanted to. But, they could also drive around the corner in either direction. Now, the dome is held up by low air pressure. Originally, the air inflation units were on the front side of the dome. They were moved into the back, and the fire lane basically put in between them. So, because we can't have the snow that will slide off the dome, land on top of the inflation units, we have to be able to get it off. So, there is a 26-foot clear span between the ductwork from the inflation unit, which goes up the wall of the dome, and the inflation unit, and that meets the fire code requirement. So, we do not have that. There is a, the landscaping on the backside of the site, these are all arborvitae, so it's basically a solid wall of the narrow arborvitae, evergreen. They get very bushy, they get tall, but they don't spread out a lot. And I believe that was part of the contract with Brightland Solar to have landscaping there. We will also, we have landscaping, obviously, in the front of the dome on our parking islands, the islands that are right in front, we have that. Through each of the parking islands, there is a sidewalk, and then we come up, and we have a crosswalk connecting them, and then we have two points where it comes into the entrance of the dome. This is a non-vehicle area, so we're bringing everybody on walkways right to the entrance, and then they can come in. There will also be, on the snow shelf, there'll be a painted crosswalk area also because, to provide access to the baseball fields on the western side of the site over here. There has been discussion with the town of ultimately, these roads being taken over by the town of East Fishkill with opening it up out to Lime Kilm Road. Scott Bryant requested that we show an underground cattle crossing, just to have it for the future. In the event the town does take these roads over, obviously, you can't have kids walking at grade across that. So, this would be basically an underground box culvert, and then we would have a handicap-accessible walkway on both sides. So, it goes up 30 feet at the 1 to 12, and then there's a 5 by 5 landing, and then it continues up till we get to grade. So, that would only be built in the future if and when the town takes the roads over, or in the event Brightland Solar proposes a redevelopment project here that might have some intense traffic use, such as a retail mall or, you know, something else along those lines. We also originally had a sidewalk from the dome that went between the two baseball fields to connect out to the John Jay property. Again, through the discussions with your town staff, that sidewalk now comes out from this corner of the dome, out to Auditorium Drive, along Auditorium Drive, crosses, and comes out to Route 52 and runs along the frontage to the end of the property. So, we provide a direct connection there to John Jay and also to anybody, you know, else along the roadway for that. I had just received some comments from Brendan, and we have some additional comments from Morris Associates, and we're in the process of working on those. But, the majority, the biggest issue, I think, in the town's concern was the drainage and diverting flows away from Lake City. And I think we've really done more than I think an applicant is obligated to do, but we're happy to do it for the greater good. And I think, you know, a neighborhood that was built in the floodplain, you know, it's not the current owners. It's there, you know, development in the upstream watershed probably was a lot less in the 1960s than it is now. So, if we can, you know, help by reducing the runoff to them, you know, that's what we can do. So...
The building is being demolished. That's going to become a parking lot?
I don't know what the plans by Brightland Solar are at this point. I mean, it's partially being demolished. I don't know, you know...
Okay. How many, I know there's an easement for parking.
Yeah. Just a pad site.
How many total parking spaces are there on the site?
I would have to count them. I don't know that offhand. I will tell you that this parking lot back here is a huge number. I honestly, I'd be happy to get that information. I just can't tell you off the top of my head.
Mike, if you want to know, I mean, just from the traffic study that was done for the previous West Campus, I mean, it was, you know, 1.2 million square feet of space, and it was anticipated to have 2,360 employees.
Right. I know it's a fraction...
Not that they're all going to drive.
It's a fraction of what was for the IBM site. The numbers that were being shown are...
Yeah, we're eliminating, you know, parking here and here, and these blue areas are just 500. So, you know, you've got, you know, this is another, all the way down here is another large parking lot. So, I think Brendan, the number of 2,300, give or take, is probably pretty realistic.
For the most part, though, you would not anticipate using the overflow parking during, say, call it normal business hours? Is that fair to say?
That's absolutely correct, yes. Normal business hours, the parking would be utilized on the site proposed. We also, our parking lot will be lit by 20-foot poles with a full cutoff downdraft feature. The lighting plan also shows the limit of the light spillage and looms. I think it's, at the outer limit, it's .5, and they don't exceed the property line. When Musco did the lighting plan, not only did they do the grid on the field, but they also put the light figures, the light values out on the perimeter property line, and they're all like .5 or less.
Including from those 60 and 70-foot poles?
Okay.
Excuse me?
Including from the 60 or 70-foot poles?
Yes, yeah, that's what they did, yeah. So, it's on the lighting plan, there's, you know, grid marks and the number.
Okay.
I just wanted to mention a couple of things about air structures in general. I know that in our prior meetings with the board, there was a good deal of information exchanged about what air structures are and what they're not, and how they operate. But, just in a couple of minutes, especially for folks in the area that maybe are not familiar with them, many people have been inside tennis bubbles and smaller domes like that. They're kept up with air. It's not helium, it's just regular air. These are air tight structures, which means that the air that goes in inflates the fabric envelope and inflates it against a cable net, heavy-duty cables on the outside that help it keep its shape, give its rigidity, give it the ability to withstand storms and snow loads and wind. And the ASADI structures, air structures, American Technology Structures, have, for many years, used a uniquely patented system for that cable net to keep these structures rigid and safe. And in terms of safety, the system has a complete failsafe backup system. So, in the event, for any reason, now, there are four units that are going to keep this building inflated and keep it heated in the winter and cooled in the summertime, and there's a complete set of backup systems. In the event any of those inflation units fail, in the event there's no power to the site, they're all completely independent of electric, gas, they will run completely independently to keep this structure inflated in the event of a catastrophic loss of power to the site. They've been designed that way. Dan Frayoli's been at this for more than 50 years, and he's built structures throughout the world in terrible weather conditions, Alaska Pipeline, Siberia in Russia, and all over China. So, they're meant to deal with weather conditions far worse than we typically experience here.
How about if that ruptures?
Dan?
If it ruptures, if there's a rupture in the fabric?
Well, the whole...
And we'll just have you come up to the mic.
The whole point of ASADI, my patent that goes back to 1970s, this structure, not like most structures you see for tennis courts or smaller structures, it's a cable netting system that encapsulates the entire envelope. What that does when it encapsulates the envelope, it keeps the fabric very relaxed. If you took the net off, the fabric would have to have all of the structural strength to resist tears. With the cable net system, which is unique to ASADI, my patent, the fabric has such low loading, even under the maximum code requirement loads, 95 mile-per-hour winds, the internal pressure in the building, which is going to be required to support tons of snow at a time, the fabric is relaxed, so that if you do get a large tear, it won't propagate. If you took the net off the structure, the load would be so great in the fabric that you couldn't stop or prevent the tears from propagating. That's the major success story for ASADI. We are not limited to the size or clear span of the structure. That's why we're generally awarded, hands-down, 11 NFL football teams in the United States, large toxic waste facilities down south, 14-acre one, larger than this. So, the structures, without question, we're not inventing the wheel here. 52 years I've been building air structures. I was the first to ever introduce an air structure in the United States for a sports facility in 1963. It was tennis at the time, it was a small building. But, you have all the safety factors in these structures. The fabric meets NFPA, the total structure by design and engineering meets the IBC code, the fabrics are fire-resistant to satisfy the California Fire Marshal Code. Mechanical systems meet the requirements for the New York State and most local codes for requiring low decibel readings, so not to disturb the neighborhood. And we have thousands of these structures across the United States, worldwide. Dubai, we just put in a dozen structures. Russia, we put 46 structures two years ago. These are not questionable structures. This is a very positive, air-supported structure built to the same building codes as permanent buildings. We meet the same code requirements. As far as I'm concerned, from a buyer's standpoint, it's the safest structure in the world because there's never been an injury or a death, one's never burnt down. There's not a structure in the world that you can stand behind and say, "They never burnt down, never collapsed, and never caused injury." Air-supported structures are safe, a lightweight structure.
Steve Trinkus, again, for the record, just a couple of things. We have a, on the western side, there is a airlock. This would allow a tractor-trailer to bring equipment in, where the truck can back into this area here. The door shuts, it becomes a sealed airlock, you open the inside door. I will tell you, I went to the Danbury facility one Saturday, met the general manager, and walked in, I had never been in one. You walk through the airlock, you walk inside that dome, which is roughly three acres, it feels like you're in this room. You don't feel the air, there's nothing moving, it's just, it's just this big bubble roof over you. So, very impressive to me. The one point that I don't think we brought up yet, that this dome is actually, in contrast to Danbury, which is set kind of a grade, this has a 10-foot wall above grade, so the dome starts 10 feet above, which will actually facilitate the doors being through a concrete wall versus being through the dome. When we met with fire, we also set the emergency doors, on this end, there's emergency doors throughout the dome, but this one would be a special fire access... emergency doors throughout the dome, but this one would be a special fire access door for the firemen. So there'll also be a line that comes inside with sand pipes on either side of that interior building for fire protection. They also requested that we have three hydrants on the front and the backside, and those have been laid out. So they will have plenty of firefighting capability. But as pointed out, these domes really don't catch fire. They're very highly resistant, you know, to it. And there's nothing really flammable inside of it. So.
Okay. So you're saying that, you're saying on the northeast corner is where you'd have the fire, main fire access?
Access, correct.
And that would be the closest corner to the arch that's inside where you have the restaurant and the retail and things like that? Because that probably does have some flammability to it.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, we've spoken for a long time. But answer your questions, maybe if you want to hear from the public now, or we can answer any specific questions that you might have.
Okay. I'll call for questions in a second. But just to finish what you're describing, was there anything else from the fire advisory board or any of the other folks that you've been in front of that you want to call out for the public hearing now before we move to questions?
I think of course, the fire issues, we've made the changes that they've requested.
Yeah, I mentioned the standpipe inside. And like I said, we have some minor technical comments to address for Brendan and Joe, but I think the big picture drainage, I did have a chance to talk to Joe this afternoon at the end of the day. And, you know, we'll be getting more detailed information. We had prepared, you know, the SWIP, Chris Lupin from Chazen had prepared the EAF forms and that consultation with Michelle. He's actually on vacation also this week. But so we'll get the other little technical details. But the big picture stuff, I think we have a meeting of the minds pretty much on those issues.
Okay. And I'll come back to board questions in just a second. Brendan, is there anything you want to cover with traffic before we open for more questions?
Yeah, I think it's worthwhile to just sort of give an overview of some of the traffic. Our office did conduct a traffic impact study for the project. One of the first things we did was to identify what the peak hours were going to be for the facility. And I think as the applicant has indicated, it's going to be in the evening during the week and then midday on Saturday. So we looked at those timeframes from 2:00 to 6:00 during the week and from 11:00 to 2:00 on the weekend. We identified the hour between 5:00 and 6:00 as being the area-wide peak hour and the hour from 11:30 to 12:30 on Saturday as being the peak hour. We looked at projecting traffic. We got data, available data that's out there for these multi-use type fields and some information that the applicant was able to provide for us to determine what level of traffic would be generated by the facility. What we did determine, we tried to use the worst-case scenario in the field layouts that you were shown. The field layout that generates the most amount of use and people and traffic would be if all the fields were multi-use fields, those 12 multi-use fields. So we used that as the basis of a worst-case scenario. During the weekday in that 5:00 to 6:00 hour, we estimated that the peak traffic total in and out would be a little bit over 300 cars in that peak hour. And then on Saturday in the midday, about 360 cars. We also looked at how we would anticipate the traffic being distributed. Since it is a regional facility, it's certainly anticipated that a lot of the traffic would come from the 84 corridor and Limekill Road. It was estimated that about 50% of the traffic would come from that direction, 20% to the east, 20% to the west, and 10% to the north. Sort of, I mentioned this earlier with Mike, but putting these numbers in perspective, you know, the 312 and the 360 on Saturday, the West complex was, you know, originally designed with 1.2 million square feet of space with over 2,000 employees. That, the traffic study that was done in the 80s for that development, they estimated the weekday PM peak traffic coming out onto the area being about 1,000 cars in that PM peak hour, with about 40% of it heading into the 84 corridor. What the traffic impact study showed was that there's certainly some impact to the intersections. The intersection that shows the most impact is actually the intersection of 52 and Limekill Road because of the increase of traffic heading north on Limekill and needing to take a left turn there. Other intersections, the traffic study, we included all intersections from Rothel Drive up through Limekill Road, and we also studied South Drive and Limekill Road. You know, based on sort of the unique nature of the development and some of the uncertainty in the available data, you know, it's our recommendation to the town that, you know, once the project is built and in operation, that there is a traffic study done to make sure that the assumptions and the numbers that were gathered are correct and that the appropriate level of mitigation happens. This is sort of consistent with the rest of the 52 corridor and the other developments. You know, the applicant would be asked to contribute to a fair share amount to conduct that study. That study would be done in conjunction and submitted to the New York State DOT. And then the applicant would certainly be asked to contribute to any, you know, a fair share contribution to, you know, any improvements that were recommended from that study. It certainly would include the reactivation of the signal at Rothel and then looking into the possibility of making a public thoroughfare from 52 to Limekill. The other traffic-related stuff, I think as Steve alluded to, not, you know, not major, but some internal stuff in terms of circulation, different vehicles and design vehicles, how they would circulate through the site and actually having a little bit more of a comprehensive plan of how buses and trucks or people that wanted to drop off in front of the facility having appropriate signage to outline some of that. I think one of the things that Steve talked about, the potential for that underpass under South Drive, you know, that might cause the reconfiguration of that intersection a little bit. So that's something that we think needs to get looked at now, you know, not when that comes into play. Looking through some of my notes.
And you're comfortable with the fire ingress and egress around the site the way it's been presented?
Yeah, I think we were looking just for a little bit more detail in some of the areas where, especially along the west side of the dome, you know, how the fire apparatus would be able to locate itself on the west side of the dome. I think the front and the rear and the east side are pretty well taken care of. But then also, again, just internally, you know, making sure that everyone knew where to go and to get to the right place, that there be some internal signing. We did, I know they mentioned about the parking and the size of the parking spaces. We also looked at some of the pedestrian access from the overflow parking to the dome and asked them to consider some different options in locating the sidewalk or the connections to those lots so that people can easily walk from the overflow parking to the dome.
Okay.
I think that sort of covers the highlights on my end. I don't know if there's any questions from the board.
Any questions for Brendan?
Brendan, just one thing. Based off of the traffic, your study, any warrants failures at that intersection where for the signal that's...
Of Rothel Drive?
Yeah.
Well, the biggest impact actually is to the facility itself. You know, there's, you know, the nature of the traffic too, it's that, it's a turnover, you know. People are all coming and leaving and sort of at the same time. And that's the way the dome is going to operate. You know, there's going to be scheduled games. People are going to be coming and there's going to be a turnover. So it's all going to happen pretty quickly in the course of sort of that design hour. So actually, the, you know, the failing level of service really comes from on the site itself and those cars that need to come out and actually head westbound on 52.
Is any of this new news to you guys?
No.
Okay.
Michelle, from your perspective, I know you've looked at some of the landscaping and the lighting and things like that.
Yeah. And I just, I just wanted to reiterate that I did speak with Chris Lupin right before he left on vacation. And we talked a little bit about some of the pedestrian circulation issues. I'm seconding Brendan's comments, specifically just how we're going to get people efficiently and safely from those overflow parking lots into the, or towards the entrance, is one thing that we just have to be fleshed out a little bit more, I think. And, you know, potentially just some sort of description or parking management plan describing how the parking will function during normal business hours and then also during special events, just so we understand what would happen, how people would be directed. Because I'm assuming during special events, some people would be headed towards the fields and wouldn't want to park near the building, but instead would want to park closer to the fields and how that would be differentiated in the signage and all that kind of stuff. And then as far as lighting is concerned, I think Steve just said that Musco has even more advanced lighting. And you guys, I'm assuming that you guys are contemplating those LED lights, if the technology's available. Yeah, okay. And I'd like to see that as much as possible because the poles will be tall. And a lot of times, you know, people can see quite, live quite a distance away from those sports lighting. They can see the lighting. So to the extent that they can be shielded and full cutoff, I would highly recommend that. And also on timers. And I believe all Musco usually are on timers and you can actually use, you can turn them off with a phone call. So that I would highly recommend.
What about to, what about to car traffic? Because I know there's some fields that I drive by where the lights in the field practically blinded driver. I mean, have we looked at whether or not there's anywhere on Route 52 as a driver or any of the other roads in the area might see those lights?
You're going to see them quite a bit, but I think with the new Musco technology, they're supposed to cut down on that glare. That's what you would consider glare. And I think with the shielding and with the directional, that's supposed to significantly cut down on that. But I'm not sure that there's, you know, we can look at how that might, yeah. I mean, I think, but I think, I think the Musco lighting now is, the technology is so good that that has largely, it's been significantly improved. And then as far as the landscaping plan, it's currently under review, but I know there's been a few tweaks as a result of the stormwater. So we'll look at that in totality when, once all the final tweaks have been made so that we don't go over it several times, basically. And I think the only other is just where, and I don't know, maybe you mentioned this Brendan, is just areas to be designated as bus parking should be kind of shown on the plan if they aren't already.
Because of the cattle crossing, we've put the bus parking area right off Auditorium Drive here. They can come in. This is the island that Brendan was talking about. This is a raised island right now. We proposed to remove the raised island and do a, like a stamped concrete. It would just be slightly higher than the existing pavement. So it would define the island, but you could drive over it. So a bus that was coming eastbound could come in. And this is a, it's 20-foot wide and there's room for three buses that they can park, drop off. And then there's a sidewalk that immediately connects. So originally it was on the west side of the, of South Drive, but when we did the cattle crossing, that necessitated the change.
And then where would the rest of the bus parking be? Like once they've dropped everybody off, is that towards the back?
They're in one of the southernmost overflow lot on the west, we allowed an area to be able to turn and come back out. But in this case, if they came in this entrance, they could go right back out the other entrance. We don't anticipate that the buses that bring a tournament team, they would drop the team off, they would go off-site. The buses don't stay there until they have to pick up the kids again. So it's not, it's not like a school where the buses drop people off and then the buses sit there until it's time. They would go off-site somewhere. The drivers might go off to get a meal or something like that. But they're not going to be staying on the site.
So you wouldn't anticipate during a school year having school buses bringing...
Well, dropping kids off, but then, you know, coming back because the typical game is a couple hours. So.
Okay.
And then finally, my other comment is just that we're looking at the handicap parking because right now it's parked for the actual spaces that are on the site. And we're just looking into whether or not it has to be more use-specific. So we may need to add some additional handicap parking, but we're going to, we're going to look at that and talk to you about that.
I think we have 10 proposed, I think, on the regulation we needed to be.
I think it's, you need one for every 25 spaces, but you need, typically it's, and this is something we'll have to look at because there's satellite parking. So we're in the process of sort of researching this right now. Typically, it's based on whatever is required for the use. So whether or not we can, we can just have the number that are actually on your site or whether or not we need to add additional ones, we'll figure that out and let you know.
We picked up all the spaces by shrinkage, length, and islands. We have other places we can accommodate the handicapped.
Right. Any questions for Michelle? Okay. Joe, do you want anything specific with regard to engineering we should go over?
Just on the stormwater primarily. Steve mentioned, you know, there's been a number of meetings in between our other planning board meetings and submittals. We've kind of been working closely with Steve and Chazen to some extent, working on the stormwater and kind of coming up with this game plan. And I think, as he said, he's, you know, formulated something here that seems like it's going to work. We still have to flesh out a few details. But overall, it looks like they've done, you know, a good job at analyzing the situation, coming up with some alternatives. One other item I don't know if Steve mentioned was on some of the larger fields, they also plan to put in a stone reservoir that would be used to store some of the runoff volume and release it more gradually into the other ponds. So he's done a number of things. The site was already, you know, it was a developed site. It had room for expansion. So they factored in and worked with what was on the site now. Plus, they've done more to divert water from the northern Route 52 side and bring it to the west side where it can be more easily accommodated, we feel. So for stormwater, you know, there's still a couple of things to be addressed, but we feel like it's headed in the right direction. I guess only one other comment, not stormwater related so much, but was there was a talk about a retaining wall for one of the fields. It was close to the road and I think they were looking to try to rework that some to give some more separation from the road. And that kind of goes back to if the road does get dedicated to the town, you wouldn't want the wall sitting right there and have a barrier. I know they're also looking at water, getting water and sewer access from the town. Those details are also being worked out.
Okay.
That's pretty much it.
Okay. Any questions or comments for Joe? John, anything else?
No, I just want to say that the town's consultants and the applicant's consultants are working together to get any concerns that are out there, water, sewers, stormwater, and others worked out. It doesn't seem that there's anything out there that's a showstopper. It's just working through some of the details.
Okay. And Brendan, I don't know if this is for you or John. We don't often put tunnels under town roads. So are there standards for that? Or, and what's the safety?
We have the one in Hoboken Line for the county trail.
I thought that was owned by the county, though. I didn't think that was...
Well, it was under a town road.
Okay. So what's our, in terms of safety and things like that, if this is specifically geared towards kids and that sort of thing, do we require lighting within it? Do we have standards and that sort of thing?
Yeah, there would be lighting in it, certainly. And it would be, you know, the appropriate...
Security cameras or something like that?
Well, actually, that would be a private, that would be controlled privately by the facility. It's just for safety.
And so the town would grant an easement back to the, the town would grant an easement back to the owner for the maintenance of the tunnel?
Yeah, there would be an agreement to allow it to install that. Then that would be under their control. So the maintenance of the lighting, the security of it would rest with them.
Okay.
It's going to be made a specially good echo for the kids to yell as they walk on there, you know, because you know there'd be plenty of that.
Metal bats.
Yeah. Okay. Mike, you had some questions?
Yeah, actually, there was just, there was a letter from East Fisk Corporate Park, your neighbors, dated today. It talks about potentially balls going off-site.
Well, they won't because the, all the ball fields have a fence on the perimeter of the outfield.
Thank you. That was it.
They will have a line like three miles, as it says, above that line is home run and below it's in play.
Go ahead. And if you don't mind, there was something else that the, that your neighbor requested, and that was some concern that folks coming to the sports dome might be parking at his, in his parking lots. So he has times of day when his parking lots are very... So he has times of day when his parking lots are very full, and he was concerned that Sportsdome folks might not, might think that that's an easier way than maybe going to overflow parking. So how do you intend to control the, the flow of traffic and ensure that cars for your site stay on your site or in your overflow?
Well, you're gonna have to park here because from the corporate site, through their parking lots, there's not access to this site. I mean, if you had a choice of parking in one of the corporate facilities here or parking here, you know, you're gonna have to bushwhack.
But if my game was at one of those side fields, is there gonna be a way for me to get to that field closer?
No, because the, the, that's all fenced, so you can't get to the fields from the exterior of them.
There's no access to begin with for them to do that, but to the extent that there's any concern, we'll cooperate with the neighbor to provide clearly appropriate signage that make sure that our people know that, don't even think about it, don't even try that. So we'll police that to, to the neighbor's satisfaction and that make sure that it doesn't happen.
And the fencing you're referencing, how tall is that fencing?
I'll tell you in a second.
Sure.
But it's intended?
High school fields are taller than the little league fields for obvious reasons, but it's based on years of experience for these types of fields throughout the country to make sure that, even if you were trying to hit a ball over the fence, you couldn't hit a ball.
It'd be like comparable to the rec fields out here where, okay.
So I think that the concern might be, well, if somebody's out in the outfield doing batting practice or something, if they're trying to hit the ball of their, you know, dairs or whatever, and there's, there's balls going over the fence, you know, what's the?
The little league field is 15 foot tall fence, on the large baseball field, it's a 20 foot tall fence. Keep in mind, on the large field, straightaway center field is 400 feet, so, you know, and the little league field are, I think, 250 deep center field, so.
And to the extent that it's a concern, the umpires, the managers, the coaches, these are all people who, this is not their first rodeo, coming to this place is coming to a special place. They know that you don't do BP the wrong direction, you don't hit balls in directions that the field is not designed to, to take place, and it's more than just hitting a ball over a, a wall, it's the fact that people are not prepared for it, there could be accidents, you don't want any of that. So, so they, we make sure they police it, we have people that'll be on staff making sure that doesn't happen, and the rest should be covered by the fencing.
So at times when the field is not maybe in use for a specific game or something like that, are the fields locked? Is there, is there no way to enter them?
Absolutely.
The fencing goes around 100% of the field, it's not like somebody can go in and?
Correct, no, no, these are astroturf fields, the dugouts, all valuable stuff, it has to be kept secure during, during non-use hours.
Okay, I want to make sure you get a copy of the letter from your neighbor, just so that you have it for your files and you understand the questions.
Thanks.
Mike, you had other?
No, that was it. Again, I commend you guys, you guys do your homework.
Anticipated employee head count during a normal week, during a tournament weekend, and any other venues that you may have that might be larger than a, a normal week or a normal tournament?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the, I was reading the letter, I didn't hear the first part of the question.
Average employee head count onsite?
Yeah, the average is 60.
For a weekday, weekend?
For, for max employees for the busiest time.
Okay.
That's, that's the, that's the, the total max employees is 60, 60, 61, 62.
And they have a designated parking area?
Yes, they'll be parking in the, in the spots that are the, gonna be the furthest away from the facility within the existing lot, not on the, not on the auxiliary.
In your own site?
Well, on our own site, correct.
Okay.
Will there, will there be any, any people there directing traffic and keeping the traffic flowing in the beginning and after these events?
During the, during tournaments, the larger events where the overflow parking is going to be used, yes, there will be people directing traffic. In fact, in our agreement with Bright Land Solar, we've provided for that, they wanted to make sure, as we do, that we have appropriate traffic controls. During the regular Monday to Friday stuff, when we're gonna be onsite, no, there's not anticipated to be.
So the 60 head count would be during tournaments?
The 60 head count would be during tournaments, correct. Although the, the increased number is not as great as you might see, we're, we're planning on having a, a staff of about 40 there most of the time, and it would go as much as 60 during the, during the tournaments.
And that would not include anyone who's within the, the arch structure? The retail sites or?
Correct, those are our people.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, anybody that's, you know, working in the tutoring area or, or in the restaurant area would be in addition to that.
Okay. Other questions, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I just had a question on the access to John Jay High School. The original plan had access, I'll say, towards the middle of the site.
Yes.
What was the thinking in driving the traffic through the sidewalks up towards 52? I would just think towards the highway would maybe be, you know, more dangerous.
Well, there was a concern that we were kind of coming into the backside of the school, down a slope that you had, have steps down there, so it wouldn't have been handicap accessible. By running it out along the edge of our parking and Auditorium Drive and the other roads, it's more or less all level all the way out. It also provides a connection that in the event additional sidewalks get put along 52, you've got a connection.
So do your sidewalks get all the way over to the John Jay property?
Yeah, we're going to our property corner.
To the end of our property corner.
Okay, so are kids gonna have to like climb through grass or top it or what's the?
There's a, a grass shoulder right now along the road, but we can only go to our, you know, to our property line. But that could be, I guess, further.
Well, I think during the day, there's a gate there.
Yeah, but that's, keep in mind, too, there's a gate right there.
Today there may be, this is a different use.
It pretty, it pretty much goes to that, you know, that, that entrance that's used in the morning.
Yeah.
To get into school, it's, it's only open in the morning, it's closed.
So is that where we want students entering the John Jay High School site?
Yeah, I, there might be, there might need to be some provision that the school, you know, does to allow, you know, easier access for their kids or, I, I wouldn't even rule out the fact that they might have to bus them from the school to the site if they're gonna utilize it. I mean, there is, I think, as Steve indicated, there is a dirt path, you know, that's sort of worn in along there, along the school frontage, and the crossing is down by the light by the school.
And I was gonna say, what did, what did we put in for the John Jay gas station? Is there, did we do a cross, a crosswalk or did we leave the crosswalk up at the light?
We left the crosswalk at its location adjacent to the light.
So I'm gonna be walking out of this property, I'm gonna get to the edge of Auditorium Drive, and I'm going to do what, to get across the street or get onto the John Jay property?
Right, yeah, right now, the only, the only, you know, controlled crossing is, is at the, at the high school. One thing that I don't think anyone's mentioned yet, they also are gonna put sidewalk out to 52 at Routhell Drive. With, with the thinking there being that if, if and when that signal becomes reactivated, that pedestrian accommodation could be included in part of reactivating that light.
Okay. And I know with Ortho Associates, we're talking about sidewalks in front of their site on the opposite side of 52 and things like that, so.
And the John Jay gas station included sidewalk along its entire frontage also.
Okay.
The dome exterior surface stays pristine, nothing ever on it, no signage, no banners, no mold, mildew, it's gonna stay pristine?
Yeah, Dan can talk about the exterior, but again, this structure's very unique to most structures, and I, including the NFL football teams, very few ever purchased Tedlar, it's a DuPont Tedlar coating. We were the first to work with DuPont to put a Tedlar, which was basically created for the aluminum siding industry because the homes turned, the reds turned pink, other colors turned brown, green. This Tedlar is very expensive, it gives the structure life and added possibly 10 years. We now have Tedlar buildings up for more than 20 years. So this Tedlar keeps it white, keeps it clean, it keeps it very slick, so the snow doesn't lay on the fabric, it slides. But most important, it stays very white, very translucent, so you don't need to turn on any energy of lighting inside the dome during the daytime. The natural light going through the fabric is more than the foot candles of a professional sports field.
And again, no banners, no signs, no anything on the dome ever?
Well, I, I think that the only thing on the outside would be whatever signage requirements we'd have to meet for the local municipality. There's no plans for any signs, but to the extent that ever came up, I suppose we'd have to come back and get approvals per your sign codes for, for anything like that.
Any other questions, comments from board members? Okay. We have a few folks in the audience tonight, so if anyone would like to come up and speak for, against the Hopeville Sportsdome site plan or ask us some questions, we have a clipboard to sign in up at our desk here off to the, let's see, to your right, you can come on up and sign in, and then we'll call you up to the, to the microphone in the order in which you sign in for us. Are you okay leaving your laptop there? We'll have, we'll have members of the public coming up in the podium.
Hello, I'm Alan Kaladner, live in 11 Circle Drive in Lake City. First of all, thank you for the presentation, it's quite a project. There was a lot of information tonight, I just want to validate whether or not there will be continued public hearings. It is summertime, there are a lot of people on vacation, this room would typically be full with a project such as this. So is there, this is not gonna be the only public hearing?
No, this will not be the only.
Okay. Many of my notes were, were answered, so I apologize in advance if I'm repeating myself. I have a question for the developer as to why this site, and specifically why East Fishkill was chosen?
Should I answer?
No, we'll go ahead and have you direct your comments to us, and then we'll go back to the applicant.
Do, do they own the land, are they leasing the land from the, the owner? If they do own the land, when was it purchased, and will it stay on the tax rolls? Or is there any type of economic development agreement with the town on property taxes? Will the rec department see any revenue from this? As do other developments within the town where the rec department gets money through residential or commercial development. What happens to the East Fishkill Baseball Association? This is, there's also been a huge drop in enrollment in that program, will this affect that in any way, in a negative sense? I'll, I'll come up with the, my other concerns there. They had mentioned that it's gonna be 160 foot high, but there's a 10 foot wall, so is it 150 plus 10 or is it 160 plus 10?
It should be 150 plus 10, it's 160 total.
How high is the existing building on that site? Because I did see balloons there for a couple of days and then they were gone, so we kind of?
Yeah, the balloons were to indicate the peak of the building.
Right, so how tall is the building in the back?
I?
Because that would really give people a better idea of how big that building is.
Well, there's one structure onsite that's taller, it's the water tank, and IBM site.
Okay, and is that 150?
That's taller.
I understand that, but it's?
It's like 186.
It's 180, okay. In the indoor fields, they showed the fields spread out on all four corners of the building, will there be room for dugouts, because there was nothing displayed? Where, will there be spectators on the perimeter of the building, on the perimeters of the fields? Will the restaurant, and I think you addressed this, that the restaurant will not be a retail place for people to, it will not be a destination, per se?
Yeah, and I'm not sure that the applicant said it during this meeting, but in other presentations to the planning board and to the town, where they've been very clear that that, that structure that's inside the building is really intended to be used by the people coming there for the sporting events, it's not, it's not intended to be a destination.
The indoor field dimensions, it said 220 to dead center, foul poles being 200, those are not sufficient for a high school varsity game. So how is the configuration internally reconfigured to accommodate full-size fields inside? Which then leads me to my questions as, have, is there any agreement with the Wappinger Central School District to have access to use this facility? I think that would be an important consideration for the developer, because there are a number of fields that have just, that are going through revamping. I know the John Jay field is in pretty bad shape, there's been discussion to put astro, or astroturf on that type of field, so is there any agreement that they have with the town for the rec use as well as for the Wappinger Central School District and Arlington and Beak and et cetera?
I'm sorry, you're talking about other school districts?
Yes. This is gonna be a regional facility from what the developer is saying, so if it's a regional facility, then I think the people in the region should have access to use it. The indoor fields, when you go to your multi-use, is it just lining? So does the infield and the outfield stay there, the pitcher's plate stays there, it's just lining? Okay, clears that up. Hours of operation, I see that that goes till 1:30 in the morning, which as a local resident is somewhat concerning. You also talked about, about 1,620 participants using it on a weekend, so if that's a child who doesn't drive and they bring both their parents and possibly siblings, you're looking in excess of 5,000 people going in and out of that corridor on a weekend day. There are no sidewalks. If they want to go to the Dunkin' Donuts in the new development at Lake City Gas Station, how are they gonna get there without walking through grass to the light, crossing over at John Jay and coming back? Because there are no sidewalks along that stretch. Back to why you chose East Fishkill, you showed some very beautiful facilities in other locations around the area, you know, Maryland, you showed Cooperstown, why wouldn't you have put it somewhere else? Namely Cooperstown?
They haven't.
They don't have an indoor facility of this size.
Correct, but they already have an outdoor facility.
Outdoor facility. I question the revenue projections, because I don't think that the, the economic impact that we will see will be specific to East Fishkill. I think the majority of it, where the hotels are and where the restaurants are on the Route 9 corridor, so I don't see the economic impact to East Fishkill being as positive as the developer may think. So I'm sorry, I'm just going through my notes.
That's fine.
Can I ask a question about, you made a comment about the East Fishkill Baseball Association and declining enrollment. Is that like something the applicant should factor in?
Well, I don't know whether it's gonna be a positive development for East Fishkill Baseball or will be a negative, because the enrollment in that, in that program has dropped from roughly 1,000 kids to my last, you know, was about 450, which is about half of what it was 15 years ago. Baseball in general has seen a huge decline. Obviously, I would hope this would kind of change that, because I'm a big fan of baseball, I'm a, I'm a umpire, which brings me to other, where will the referees and the umpires come from? Will they be private or will they use the local associations with the local volunteers? You addressed the water, I think that's great, so thank you very much for addressing the water concerns of the people in Lake City. I would question why this project was not located on the 84 corridor, where the original development was supposed to be for the truck stop and/or the hotel down near the 84 Limekiln location, if they in fact want to use this as a regional draw for the northeast, it seemed to be, that would be a better location for it. Address the issue regarding the students and their walking, I don't understand why John Jay would care whether there's a access to this property unless they're using it for, as part of their facility, so that goes back to my question on Wappinger's. In the planning board agenda, you talked about a tulip subdivision, so is there something else being considered as part of this development or follow-up to this development that's not being discussed, so I'd like to know a little bit more about that. And then like one, two other little things, one regarding lighting. Back in the day, on a cloudy night during the winter, or a cloudy night at any time of year, Lake City never got dark, and they never got dark because the IBM lights just glowed. So will this new technology of lighting mitigate that problem for us? And my last thing was just something recently noticed, that they, they will be applying to the town or working with the town for water and sewer. I think the people of Lake City and the other areas within the town should take precedence for sewer and water over a development like this. So I know I asked a lot of questions, hopefully they'll be, they'll be addressed at some point.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's, let's take these a couple at a time. I guess first, to clarify, I'm gonna hit some of the ones that I, I think we can probably answer right away, the, the lighting, the outdoor field lighting, I know that you said your hours of operation may go till 1:00 AM or 1:30, depending on the day and the time of year, is that intended to be the use of the outdoor fields as well?
We don't anticipate that being the case, but we wanted to include the
We don't anticipate that being the case, but we wanted to include the use of the entire facility as necessary. And that goes back to the lighting. Musco and the other facilities we've looked at have come up with lighting that didn't exist five years ago, didn't exist two years ago, certainly didn't exist 20 years ago, so that you don't have this lighting bleed, so that you don't have Lake City lit up at night. We don't anticipate that there's going to be use for outdoor fields late into the evening like we would have on an indoor facility, but we weren't saying no to outdoor lighting during the, during those hours after 10 o'clock.
Okay. And what about the lighting of the dome itself? So you're, you're going to have people in there potentially till 1:00 or 1:30 in the morning. How does, the dome is white, so I'm assuming it'll have some sort of glow to it. And Michelle, I don't know, maybe, have we, do we understand what that glow is going to do, and how the light will spill off the property?
Well, we can certainly speak to it. I don't know if you have had a chance to go up to the Danbury facility to take a look at what it looks like. And we've referred, I don't know if the public's aware, Asadi built a facility in Danbury, about a three-acre facility for multi-sport use, and it just went up about a year ago.
About two years.
Two years ago. There's a very dull, not bright, light that comes through the dome from the indoor lighting at night. It's, it's very subtle, it's, it's not as bright as a parking lot light, it's not as bright as a, a ball field light. But I, I'm sure my words don't do justice to it. Please, by all means, take a look at the, the Danbury facility, if you're concerned about that. But when you're, when you're a few feet away from the dome, it doesn't provide you with any, any light. You can't see it yourself as a result of the light coming out of this facility.
Okay. I'm just going to, I'm just going to go backwards. Water and sewer, I know, is something that's still under discussion, so I don't think we can answer that question tonight. We know we need to be able to answer that question. But going backwards again, umpires and employees at the site, is it your intention to bring in outside folks, or to hire from the community?
There's going to be a need for both. There's not going to be enough in the local community to cover the tournaments. For the regular events that are there, Monday to Friday, by all means, the local people are going to be here. They're going to be close, they're going to have the availability. We know there's talented people locally, so yes, by all means. When the, when the tournaments and summertime uses are there, there's going to have to be a combination of both.
For instance, Cooperstown makes each team, so every week, there's 105 teams that participate, makes each team bring an umpire, because there's not even enough local umpires to help. So each team is mandated, and you pay to bring your umpire to help officiate during that week. Not that they're officiating at any of your games, they never do, in fact. They officiate every other game. And the answer is yes to hire locally.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure even our local soccer leagues and all that stuff have trouble continually staffing.
Yeah, we participate in tournaments in Newburgh, and they're, we have, we have umpires from New Haven, Connecticut. It's just, that, that will be, we start off.
Okay. There was comment made on the revenue impact projection. To be clear, they weren't necessarily revenue impacts for East Fishkill, they were for the region. Is that fair to say?
Correct. Combination of both the region and the, the immediate area. Yeah, and we, we, we can't tell you specifically whether it's going to be the 17 and 1/2 that they had a million dollars from Rehoboth, or the $7 million that they had for, for, the Georgia facility. That wasn't the purpose of that. Just to show that there is a, a real economic engine driven from these kinds of facilities.
Okay. I think we should, and maybe we just make it, I think we should revisit the way we get pedestrians off the site to potentially across the street, and make sure that we're able to do that in a safe manner. I'd rather not have folks walking on something other than a sidewalk, if we can avoid it through this process. I understand that may not be possible, but I think we need to look at that. Used by the school districts, I know, maybe you could just give us a little bit of a feel, because we, we've talked a little bit about this, about what benefits the town might have for the use of the facility, the school districts, et cetera. Where are you with that right now? And what, what do you think that looks like?
Well, the, the intent is, and exactly how it works out still has to be done, but the intent is, our conversations with the recommission, we've met with them on a couple of occasions, is to make available to the high schools, to the recommission, the facility for their use at various times throughout the week. When they need it, when they would want it, how it corresponds with events that have already been booked. We have to, we have to figure that out. That's, that's, the idea is to provide the local high schools, the local ball teams, and the recommission with access to this remarkable facility to their heart's content, as much as they can get in there. It's just, the scheduling is going to have, is going to be a little tricky to make sure it works out, so that everybody that's contracted to be there, and the local folks, have access to the facility. So some weeks it may be directly after school, some weeks it might be later in the evening, but that's going to have to be, that's going to be, have to be worked out. And I know that, that the, one of the comments talked about the impact on local baseball. And we know from experience that these facilities, even though they'll attract from a, a large area, they will spur local interest in not just baseball, because it's a multi-sport facility, but in all sports. Because nobody will have easier access, quicker access than participating in a facility that you can drive to in 10 or 15 minutes, if not less. So there, there should be a positive impact for the, the local kids, and for the high school kids, from having this facility there. That's our intention. We want to be a good neighbor for that purpose. All of us are parents and have kids in, in high school playing sports, so that's, that's, that's a priority item for us, as, as we think we should be.
And our income is leagues participating in our facility. We're not creating a league within our facility. It says, no, we're not taking away from the local league. We want the local league to play with us. And, and when I, when the impact with, and when we say making it available, it's for East Fishkill. It's not for Wappingers, it's not for Pound Ridge or Bedford, if you want to say in a regional area. It's specific to East Fishkill. And a question that was also brought up, and maybe I'm jumping the gun, but they said, why East Fishkill? Why not?
You know, I'm sorry, I'm going to have you just come up to the mic, because it's hard, we can hear you, but others may not.
We say, with the question was why East Fishkill? And the question, the answer is why not East Fishkill? We've, we've, we've probed many areas, in the Westchester, and Dutchess, and Putnam County areas, and we felt that East Fishkill was a good corridor because of 84, and the Teconic, and everything else that was there. And we, we had the ability, and I'm sure that you'll get to that question, we had the ability to do what we could do in the IBM, in the IBM, on the IBM facility. So our, our success is based on what goes on around us with the, with the leagues and the participants. And we totally anticipate with the rec committee to work with them in any and every way, to give them the, the anticipated time spots that they need, or discounts that they need, or however way we decide to work it. It's still work in progress that we're evolving as well.
No, the important point is that we're not creating the leagues. We are a facility for the leagues that exist to have a facility to play in. It's not like this is the, you know, the Sports Kingdom League is Mondays and Thursdays. That's not what's, what, what we do.
Okay. Okay. And then, just to continue, that you are meeting regularly with our recommission?
Yes, we have, and we will continue.
Unfortunately, he just left a little while ago.
I could just say that the, there will be a community benefit agreement, and normally the things they're covering that is access to the local high school, and that would be in a range of regular use, but for tournament use, if they have a particular game a year, they'll come in and use it. The town would have time preferences. Obviously, there'd be some free use, there'd be some paid use. I mean, that all has to be worked out. And that is obviously part of this whole process. Additionally, if I might just respond to a couple of other things.
Sure.
There is no economic development incentive. It is a two-lot subdivision, because the balance of the property is an abandoned industrial site that buildings are being demolished in, and that's, will be parcel one. This will be parcel two.
But it's not two additional.
No, it's one parcel now, it has to be divided. And the applicant before the board is the contract vendor. That means to have a contract to buy it, subject to approvals, as are 90% of the applicants that come before this board. You don't buy unless you know you can use it for what you want to use it for. There will be an assessment on the property, it'll be set by the town assessor. Two-lot subdivision. That's all I have to say.
Just as a reference to baseball, we're a multi-sport facility.
And again, I'm just, I want to bring you up to the microphone.
We are a multi-sport facility, so baseball happens to be in Dan and my, in our hearts, because that's what we know better. Our two oldest children play lacrosse, played in, into, into college level as well. So we didn't limit it to just baseball. Unfortunately, baseball nationwide has decreased 50% because of sports like lacrosse and soccer that's being played in the spring, and so on. So the, this, we're hoping this will entice more baseball to come back, because now they'll have the ability to play it 12 months a year. Unlike basketball, like basketball, it's going to be played at any, any time. So the baseball part of it, and we were very clear to make this multi-sport, so that it wasn't limited. And we didn't talk about girls softball, girls field hockey.
I'm sorry, just, we, when you turn away from the mic, we need to pick up the...
Girls softball, girls field hockey, all those other sports that are really important, and are going to be important to our facility as well. And the, there was a question about the lines, yes. The, the first slide you saw with the way the baseball fields were laid out in the multi- fields, the, there's a machine like a Zamboni, if anyone knows what a Zamboni on an ice skating rink is, that literally relines the field for a softball, or for a, a field hockey game, or a lacrosse game, or a soccer game, or a football game.
Is that with something like chalk? I'm assuming some sort of non-toxic sub...
It's paint. It's a non-toxic, correct. It's organic, paint.
Paint powder.
Yep.
Okay.
We don't, I would...
Does it wash off, or does it...
Yeah, it has to, because then they, to recreate the new lines.
So the machine goes back over it, the first thing it does is take off that line and lay the...
Okay.
The next line.
That's kind of neat. So the question, and I'm sorry, just sticking with the, the question about the interior, the comment was that full-size field, that the layout didn't actually accommodate a full-size field, and I want to say it was for high school, is that?
No, it absolutely does. I don't know if the slide had it on there, but the...
When it went to two baseball fields, that's when it was high school or professional, with enough distance for foul lines and...
Yeah, if you, if you played, if you played with a full field in this direction here, it would be a regulation field. So if you need to divide it into four fields, but you just had one field, it would be bigger than a professional baseball field.
Okay, so I'm going to have you, go ahead, let's go ahead, and can we turn this board around, so that the, the public can see the...
So if it was one field, you'd be Yankee Stadium, right? And then what we had was, it would be two corners, and that would be enough for a high school regulated field. These were indicated as four little league fields. That's all they are. So, and I don't even, we didn't, it's not even part of our, our presentation. So if we took two corners, then that would be two high school regulated fields. But if you wanted to create a Yankee Stadium, this would, this, these, this dimension here would be bigger than Yankee Stadium. For the old Met fans.
And while you're up, while you're up, let me just have you, let me just have you also explain how spectators and dugouts work on those fields? Because there isn't actually like an underground...
We've done, we've done a lot of research on that, and what we've done is created these areas, we went to Myrtle Beach, we, our kids were down just in Myrtle Beach recently. There is these, and I don't know the exact dimensions, but there are dugouts, I'm sorry, there are dugouts, and I can just go...
No, I'm sorry, I just want to make sure you're staying close to a mic, so we're picking up what you're saying. You can go ahead and face the audience, just stay close to the mic.
There are dugouts, there are warm-up, on-deck circles, and they...
You can go ahead and face that towards the audience. I was actually just trying to see whether we were picking up the sound.
And there are, there's even a, a warm-up, a pitching warm-up mound on the side as well. And basically, we just took the length, this whole length, and we broke it up that way. There's some spectator, more apparent spectator seating that's there as well. Not much, but there is on the side as well, for visiting a home team. And then, of course, the way this is, most of that participants would sit up there.
Thank you. Okay. Did anybody else have other notes? I think I caught everything from the original comments. And then, was there anyone else from the public who signed in? Can I be quick? So Margaret? Great, thank you.
Hi, my name is Margaret McManus. I live in Four Seasons, which is behind IBM.
Okay.
And when the balloons were up, I could see them clearly from my deck. And I have concerns because it's so very high. I also have questions about the height of the balloons, the number of balloons that were used, why only four for such a large facility? Excuse me. What assurances are there that the balloons were actually at 160 feet high? The string that was holding the balloons, was there an arc in it? Was any measurements taken to ensure that they were at the height that they're supposed to be? It seems to me that you'll be able to see this facility from a large portion of the town, especially from my neighborhood, and all the way up to Sharp Reservation. That's, my biggest concern is the visual impact.
Okay.
That it's, it's, it's too high and too big.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you. John, do you know, were we there, or Joe, did we have someone there that was actually measuring the string that was floating those balloons? Was someone from the town monitoring that?
I'm going to have to ask you something.
I just, I'm sorry, just...
I'm sorry.
Yes, absolutely, you can stay there for one, but, but John, do we have...
I believe somebody did measure the string, but I will have to confirm on that.
Okay, so we'll confirm that, that that was monitored by someone from the town, and I'm sorry, go ahead.
We, we manufactured one full horizontal ground strap webbing, parachute webbing, for the 468 feet wide. And every 40 feet, we put up a balloon that was approximately seven, eight-foot diameter, bright red. And every web strap was marked with the height configurations that come right off our engineering plans, to the height to create the perfect arch. Now, of course, when, at times it was windy, you did see them sway, and they, they would go lower and higher, but we left them up for several days, so that anyone, whatever takes place here in East Fishkill for going there to study them, to see them, they were, they were all labeled, they were all factory-measured. Of course, only when it was calm did you see the true shape. But generally speaking, balloon tests we do all over the country for other facilities we put up for some of our customers, and generally, they just look for that middle-height balloon. We thought we'd do a little more here by creating a complete arch with the true height configurations, and that's what we did. And they were up there for quite a time for us, for you to study. The other thing is, the structure, of course, is going to be white, and it won't have the contrast of these eight-foot diameter red balloons in the sky, it'd be white against a, a white cloud sky, or light blue. And you'll find that in the winter months especially, snow on the ground, you won't, you won't even see the structure there, as large as it is.
Okay. Can we just talk about the visual renderings for a moment? Because I, I think we need to make sure that we have that for the public to be able to see. You did, I think you created several, several renderings that were views from different points around town.
Right.
To give us a feel for what is, what does this structure actually look like? And I can't remember if you had one specifically from the Four Seasons development or not, but that, maybe one from 84, or somewhere towards the Four Seasons development. Michelle, I don't know if you're looking at the renderings right now, if you can find a picture. And I'm just, I'm not exactly sure where.
Because what they, and just, just so you know, the balloon test itself, while it was important to be able to see it, the balloon test itself was really to help us create the visual rendering, so the applicant could take the existing site and put a picture of the balloon kind of integrated into the landscape, so we can see what it should look like when it's completed. So what you'll see in some of the documentation we have here are the, the actual visual rendering pictures from those balloon tests.
I just want to say that the Milton Dome is about two acres in size, and you can see that from 15 miles away on Route 84 as you drive down towards the Teconic. So visual impact...
Oh, I don't think anybody would say that you won't see this. I mean, it's, it's a very large structure.
It's a very, very large structure.
Absolutely.
Which you will probably see from across the river. And what are considerations taken for what that visual impact, because it, I think the Milton Dome is like a big pimple on the side of the mountain when you look over across the river from our side of the river.
Michelle, did we have a rendering that was from the general area of Four Seasons?
Yeah, I mean, we, we don't have one directly from the Four Seasons development, but we have a couple that are within... a couple that are within some of the view lines, or line of sites, but closer, actually, which were five and six. I don't know if you guys have the...
I don't happen to have it up here with me, but.
There is one from Wickapee Run and Clearview Circle.
That's the next one.
There, but is that closer than the one that you're talking about?
Probably just a different bandage.
Where's Ronnie, can you point out to me?
Ronnie Mead is, Ronnie Mead is higher up, it's across that here. So this is, right, I, I'm like right here, I could directly see the balloons way above.
I know, there were five of them.
You know, like I have a panorama view of our mountains.
I think you had five for the first day. I want to say you lost one about a day or a day and a half in.
I mean, all of these houses.
But the apex balloon was there the whole time.
These are all million-dollar houses, and they're all going to look at that.
Are you above it, the structure, so you'd be looking down on it, in front of this area?
My house is a little bit high on the hill, so.
So do you look down on the IBM buildings right now?
Michelle.
I'm sorry.
I want to, are we okay to move on?
Yes, yeah, I just want, I'm just trying to understand where the location is exactly.
The only thing I can see from IBM is that there's those little stacks on the top of the buildings. I can't see the buildings themselves, but there's... I don't really see it.
Kathy, do we have anyone sign up to come by?
There's like these little stacks.
Steven? And Michelle, well, let's, Michelle.
You can move on, go ahead, you can move on, I'm just marking where she is right now.
Okay.
My first question. Is there a code for maximum building height in this town?
Depends on what district, what infrastructure.
Well, we all know what we're talking about, so.
This, there's a provision in zoning law that's called Large-Scale Recreation Special Permit.
Special permit, so it has to be approved?
Right.
So what's the maximum height for a building in it, and where we're?
For air and flight structure beyond 60 feet.
What a coincidence. Was this just passed?
It's before the town board.
It's before the town board now?
Part of this application is a request to create a special permit process for this.
So does this go before the public, in a public hearing, this special permit?
Right, there was a public hearing on it.
I don't remember seeing a letter.
And...
I don't remember seeing a letter, my mail asking for...
No, you don't, it's...
I am a neighbor of the place.
I know that, but it's a, it's a special permit that could be applicable in any industrial zone in the town.
Right.
And it already exists in business zones, so the board, the town board held a public hearing in the legislative part, and then they await the input and information from these hearings in making a determination about that.
How come I didn't read about that public hearing in the town? Do represent us, right? Okay.
Well, sir, there's a process you go through. The planning board, the public hearings require notice, everyone within 500 feet.
The new medical people, the new, the people bought the old Route 52.
Rent the restaurant.
I got a letter about that.
Correct, and you would get a letter.
And I got a letter about the gas station.
And you would get a letter about this if you were within 500 feet of this property. You should have gotten a letter.
I think I am within 500 feet.
Well, that's, you take that out, it's up tomorrow.
I will. Sewage. What are we doing about sewage? This is a public hearing. What are we doing about sewage? They're going to produce sewage, where's it going?
Well, there are three plans.
All right.
Three possibilities. One would be obviously to create some sort of a disposal system on the site itself. The second one is, we all know, or may not know, when this was a functioning IBM site, it was interconnected with the main treatment facility at the IBM facility. There are discussions with IBM about using that facility.
Okay.
Not only for this site, but also possibly solving the problem with John Jay's plant. So that, one of those two options would, the third option, which is the more expensive option, would be to make a connection to the town sewer treatment plant here, but that would be a corridor line, that would be for all the commercial properties on Route 52, and any residential community that wanted to have a sewer district created and pay for the bond to connect it.
So, this, is it going to come to a conclusion to?
It has to come to a conclusion before this process is, if, if the process, if this project's approved, that's an integral part of the approval.
All right, the drainage. I know you're trying to improve everything, the flow, because you took away all the green grass, and you're trying to improve the flow of water to the left of the property.
To a new drainage space, right.
Which brings us to the Wickapee Creek, and the Wickapee Creek goes through which neighborhood? Our neighborhood. So there's the other creek that's through the John Jay property, and that goes through our neighborhood to the Sprout Creek. All the creeks lead to the Fishkill Creek, Fishkill Creek, Wickapee Creek.
The Wickapee Creek enters in the Fishkill Creek downstream from Lake City.
But that's actually it, the last pipe bringing water out of this neighborhood is the Fishkill Creek.
Right.
I'm a member of the Greenhaven Fishing Game Association, and we're surrounded by Fishkill Creek, the Sprout Creek, the creek coming from this neighborhood, both of them come down to there. So the last pipe is Fishkill Creek, and it all starts backing up on our property at the club, and then it goes into their neighborhood. Now, this spring, we had a lot of rain this spring, and my, our property at the club starts to flood first. We're used to it. Cleans the place out really nice. But they were on edge this whole spring, on edge of being flooded out again. And this all started going back 10 years now due to new development all around. And everybody brings their drainage pipe to the edge of the property, and they're done with the water. And this is all, not even here, but this is all over, Fishkill, East Fishkill. Every new developer brings their pipe to the edge of their property, and they're done. It mysteriously disappears until neighborhoods start flooding out, when we have extreme rains. Wherein, this isn't the only neighborhood that has that problem. So we always have, we have to look past that pipe. Where's the Wickapee flow to? It flows into their neighborhood, and it flows down to the property of that one club, where it all comes together and flows down to, continues down to Fishkill. So everything starts backing up from Fishkill through us to here. So we had to take a closer look. You just covered up a whole bunch of natural drainage, natural grass, that's been handling it for years. So I'm kind of wondering, why are we stuffing all this into here? I don't even see the parking, because there's the buses. The gentleman here says the bus is going to come in, drop everybody off, and leave. And go where? Park in my neighborhood? Even the cars, I don't think, they got their overflow lots, and then he pointed to the purple area, like, there's more parking here. But they don't have the lease on those, that piece of the property.
That lease for 500 spaces off-site.
Off-site?
The blue area, is there a lease?
Yeah, the blue area, but he pointed even further down. That's, that's a lot, that's 500, and he's talking about how many on a weekend? So, you know, the parking's going to be tight. But where the buses going?
I think the number of people was not...
How many have you, 1,600 people on, on a weekend?
With 3,200 sites, parking spots?
I didn't hear 3,200, he didn't have a number.
I mean...
He didn't have a number on, on the park.
But the number of people is not all the people that will be there one time, that's how many people during the day.
But still, where are you, where are these buses going? They're going to come in, drop people off.
There are spaces provided for buses on-site.
He, he, he said he did have it. He said they were going to leave, he just said.
That's true, they're not allowed to park on public streets, so they can't park in the street.
Right, but, you know.
But sometimes drivers do go find a restaurant area or someplace where, that they can park, their bus go into a deli, etc., so they might do that.
So now, 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 this is where my, my other thing's going, is right across the street, you have the soccer complex, and we know how their weekends can be. So that area, that little tiny area's going to get jammed up again.
That's right, the town just expanded the parking into soccer fields, just enlarged.
That's really probably not going to cover it. That's really probably not going to cover it.
When IBM was approved, wasn't there 3,200 people in the West Complex?
The number, what did they give you? I think it's...
Mr. O'Brien, you're right, that property has a lot of parking. But I'm just saying, they're currently leasing, and they're, and the owner of the property's saying, you can have this part of it. So I'm saying that.
Right, that's correct.
The owner might hold them, stop them here, and I don't see, if they get, one of those, if they, if their business goes the way they want it to, I don't think they have the park. Because right off the bat, they're telling us that these big buses are going to roll in, drop people off, and leave the property. Because they asked, where are you going to park them? They asked them twice, and, oh, no, they're going to leave, they're going to roll in and roll out. Where are 52, where they're going to go park? What restaurant are they going to park that heck of a bus? That's a big bus. I'm more concerned about the water than the bus, the water drainage, but that's, that's just, you know, because we've been through just the traffic discussion not too long ago over the gas station, and that's still a big hole in ground catching water, pushing things out. No one's cleaning it up, and the money's supposedly sitting waiting for it to clean up there, too. So there's a lot of problems right in that spot. And we're adding someone else. And we just talked about, the gentleman wants to build right up the road, right across the street from John Jay there, right? Another development. The pipelines that keep going to the end of the property, and it's going to, you know, flood these people out. Even more. My neighbor was complaining to me, they couldn't flush their toilets, they pumped out the septic tank, and the septic tank filled right up, and it was coming from the fields, that's how high the water level is, and we're five to 700 feet from them, across the street. So I really think we got to start looking where the water's draining to and how to help along, even if it means dredging out the creeks all the way down to Houston River. That's my concerns. Thank you for your time. Sorry to make you upset.
Okay. Brendan and/or Michelle, with regard to the parking on-site, can we, can you just give us a quick recap, number of spots on-site, number of spots that will be leased, and then we'll compare that to what the peak volumes are for usage, anticipated peak volumes for usage of the site?
I can give, there's a total of 788 parking spaces. 288 spaces are located actually on the applicant's project site. And 500 spaces would be leased from the adjacent property owner in overflow lots, and they're subject to an agreement between the applicant and the adjacent property owner.
Is there anticipated to be, and this may be a question for the applicant, is there anticipated to be any limit to when the overflow parking can be used, or could that be used?
Whenever we need it.
Okay.
The, there's three, or there's three overflow parking lots. One has 208 spaces, one has 249 spaces, and the other has 43 spaces for the total of 500. And they were shown in blue on the map previously.
Okay. And so if I can just ask the applicant, now, we, we said on, I believe it was a weekend tournament, 620 churning through the, 1,620, I'm going to say players churning through the site?
Participants, right.
Participants, sorry. What's the, what's the average at any given time during the length, during the span of that tournament? Can you give us a feel, is it, is it 400 at a time, is it 300 at a time? What's, what's the typical number in the facility at any given time?
The number of participants?
Yes.
There is, there are, it depends on the configuration, because the, there's...
Take the worst configure, the most intensive configure, I don't mean worse, the most intensive configuration.
The worst configuration was, I believe, 480 participants at one time in the facility. I, I don't have the document in front of me, but we did a, we did an analysis of all the...
So that's the 12 interior fields and the four exterior fields, all in use, all at the same time?
All at the same time, correct.
So that's 480, and presumably are potentially a turnover of the same fields. So if you had, if you took it the time when all the games are ending and new ones coming in?
We would stagger that.
Yeah, that's what we looked at, estimated, too.
Yeah, it would be all the fields empty and all the fields...
I'm just trying to get to like, what's the absolute worst-case scenario? If you had like the perfect storm and somebody didn't schedule the way you would normally schedule, it would be that all the fields are in use, everybody ends at the same time, and the next group is waiting to come in, right?
Correct.
Okay, so if I, if I can do math here, 960 at most, and you have 788 parking spots, so if we assume that there's going to be folks trading off, you shouldn't have, you shouldn't max out your parking?
That's precisely why we optioned out the 500 spaces, based on the maximum use that we would need, to make sure we had sufficient parking for this perfect storm of people coming in and people coming out, even without the scheduling issue, which is an important part of what we do.
No, I, I'm, I know, but I'm just trying to say, what is our worst-case scenario? The worst nightmare here is that you have teams waiting to play the next game, and all the teams finishing their current games, and you're swapping at the same time. So you've got kind of chaos going on.
But you're, you're making an assumption, too, that you're not carpooling, so there's going to be carpooling, so it may not be that maximum amount ever, really.
Right, but I'm saying, even with 960 churning, with 788 parking spots, I don't think you're going to run out of parking spots, even at the worst, in the worst-case scenario, I, I still think you have enough parking for, within the site or with your overflow lot to handle that. What, just to give us a sense, because we haven't seen this before in town, do you have numbers for the Danbury site or something like that, to just give us a feel for what kind of parking they have, and the total number of people they could accommodate?
Brendan, some numbers. I went to the Danbury facility one Friday night and sat there and counted cars coming in over about a two-and-a-half-hour period from about 5:30 to 8 o'clock. And then I went back on Saturday from 10 a.m. to 1, you know, thinking that would, because again, we thought those were peak times. And over an hourly basis, we, you know, I think the maximum in and out was like 40 cars. And some parents, you know, I, because I parked where I could see the entrance and of the dome itself, and some parents parked, they went in with their kids, and they stayed inside. Other parents dropped their kids off, and they left the facility, and I, presumably we come back in an hour or whatever, you know, time. So not everybody stayed at the facility, some parents dropped off and that. There was also parents that brought four kids in one car, or three kids, and, you know, went in with them, so, you know, like, you know, soccer moms taking turns. So, but the worst case, I think, was about 40 cars in and out during an hour.
Actually, Laurie, I have the, I have the exact numbers that, that he provided to us.
A paper.
On, on Friday, the 25th of April, he counted that, that timeframe from 5:20, 5:25 to 7:25. 61 cars coming in, 38 cars going out. On Saturday, the 26th, he counted cars from 10:30 to 12:30, 37 cars coming in, 56 coming out. Now that, but...
So give me a feel for the size of that facility.
If it's a three-acre facility, they have inside, you know, the fields, they have a fitness area, they have an area that they, a wrestling team they can roll out mats and use, so it's, it's different than this facility, there's multiple little things in there. They, so, but again, I was, you know, just watching to see, and it really seemed very low over those periods of time. I figured Friday night would be a good time, and again, midday Saturday was also, you know, you know, technically be a peak.
So, three-acre dome, what's our dome?
It's eight acres roughly.
Eight acres, so roughly it's a third...
Three times, so, you know, if you just scaled it up.
Well, we've estimated the peak hour traffic, you know, on Saturday to be about 360 cars.
Yeah, which is...
You know, that's, that's combined, in and out. So, you know, roughly, if you want to do it roughly, you know, roughly, you know, a little more than 150 cars coming in, 150 cars going out. And that's based, that's based on trying to populate the fields and, and the different uses.
Okay, so volume of 300?
Three, yeah, three, on a Saturday, 360 during the week, like 312. Laurie, it's probably also worthwhile to mention the, you know, the condition or the part of the code, which, you know, they're, they would have to seek an additional, an additional special permit if they had a gathering greater than 1,000.
At any given time?
At any given time.
So you can't have more than 1,000 people in the dome at any given time?
That's correct.
Without coming to the town and requiring, getting a special permit?
And that involves a whole special parking plan, for how to provide for cars above the...
And probably staffing to manage parking.
Absolutely.
That, part of that process includes a traffic management plan.
Okay.
For, for that event, so, you know, that...
Okay, and again, I want to...
There was going to be a post-development opening traffic study that we would participate in, to the extent that assumptions are, are not accurate, and there needs to be additional provisions for parking, what has to be, has to be. But based on our best estimates, we should have sufficient parking.
So back to Mike's point, where we know that there's an awful lot of parking on the, on the site where you have your overflow parking, would you anticipate that you would be able to increase that if you needed to, if you found that you didn't have adequate parking?
I think we would, we didn't think we would need to. I think we would. We, we didn't think we would need to, but I think we would. I don't think there's any immediate plan for any of those parking lots that would prevent us from being able to access them, but...
Okay. So, so Brendan, I, I think as we, as we look at this, it might be twofold with regard to the traffic. It wouldn't just be the impact necessarily to the 52 corridor, but it could be the internal impact to the site, just to make sure there's adequate parking during these peak times. I, I tend to agree with you that there might be, but on the off-chance that that's not what the experience is, I think we need to be able to revisit that, say, within, you know, a year of operation or something like that, so we get the full experience of what it looks like seasonally. Joe or John, with regard to the, to the drainage and the way that it's being reworked, I think, and not necessarily for this evening, but I think we do wanna have an understanding of what the, what runs off the site now, and where it goes, and what we anticipate in the future in the storm event. I know the intention here is good. I, I hear the concern that, you know, we're just shifting water from one creek to another, but let's... If we can get some more, maybe detail on how the storm is attenuated by the, the new pond and that sort of thing, just to understand that a little bit better, and also what the effect of the impervious surface is and how we're capturing that. And I'm not saying you didn't explain, I just wanna make sure that our professionals are also looking at that, and kind of making sure that it makes sense.
Yeah, we'll definitely get into those details further.
Okay. And again, I think, Tom, to your point, there's, there's a couple different options for the, the water in the sewer, and that still needs to be worked out. So I don't think that we can go further.
And I think it should just be noted, too, that all of these studies are available to the public to review. I mean, there's detailed traffic studies with all these analyses in time. Tonight is just an overview of it, so that if anyone has a particular concern, all the stormwater studies are available for review, and then you can ask further questions.
Okay. All right. Do we have anyone else signed up? Ann?
Good evening. I live in the Wickapee Hamlet, which is west of this complex, probably about a half a mile, approximately. My one question is noise. I don't know anything about the dome. They did speak about the inflation units. So my question is, do they produce noise? Are we gonna hear 24/7 humming? You know, what kind of noise is gonna be produced from the dome?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The, the, the units are big-name brands, either Trane or Governere, typical to the same large units that are mounted on a rooftop, probably of many of the buildings that exist on the site right now. There's nothing unique about them. They're, they're blowing forced hot air or forced cool air. They have to meet the same requirements for decibel sound requirements, and we do meet the state of New York requirements.
Do we, do we know offhand what those decibels are, and what they, what it would be at the edge of the property?
When we, when we purchased the equipment, basically, or prior to that, we filed all of the mechanical engineering cut sheets on the equipment, and we supplied the decibel readings to confirm it meets with the code. We, we purchased it to meet the code.
We can certainly provide you with that information. They, the, for, for Ann's purposes, I just wanted her to understand, these units are essentially, these units are essentially identical to the HVAC units that were on the rooftops of all the existing IBM buildings. I don't know if she was able to hear those from her home during the times that those buildings were occupied, but that's all these are, are HVAC units. There's four of them. My sense was that the three buildings that there had at least a couple on each building that are similar to this, so...
But up on the top of the building as opposed to down on the ground, right?
Right, but I think a half mile away, it wouldn't, it wouldn't matter. If, if she could hear it, she could hear it. I, we've never had that experience with anybody hearing any of these. I know there's gonna be some heavy-duty landscaping that, that Brightland Solar has asked us to put in to divide up the, the, the unit from their immediately adjacent building, to make sure that there's no sound bleed, so, but I don't anticipate...
So maybe just curve that around, so that the residential area to the, to the west also has some of that?
Absolutely, absolutely. If there's a concern about that.
But I think just the fact that it's on the ground versus on the top of the building will...
Well, that's what I was, I thought that might be dampening. I wasn't sure.
You'll have the ear structure on one side and a building directly on the other side.
It's more sheltered, it's more sheltered on the ground.
We can do the extra landscaping, that's...
What about the sound, I mean, again, your hour's going till 1:00 or 1:30 in the morning. What about the sound from cheering within the building and that sort of thing? Do you have any sense of what the decibel levels are at the edge of the property if people are cheering?
The structure, the structure's wall on this structure is not a single layer of fabric, the Tedlar fabric I talked about. In order to really reduce our operating costs, meet the energy code, we, we have three layers of fabric. We have the outer shell, then an airspace of six inches of space, another layer of inside liner, another six inches of airspace, and another liner. So you're, you're talking about a honeycomb wall, total 12 inches thick with three plies of fabric. The, the two layers inside not only insulate the total building, but the reverberation from the soft hanging double layer keeps the structure very controllable as far as sound within the dome, so it's not an echo chamber. And that is one of, again, another patent of mine that has been the solution for controlling sound, but more important, control the heat loss that travels through a single wall structure. And the structure's gonna be unique with those three layers.
Okay, so I think you'd still hear the sound from the outdoor fields? Probably like if you hear the sound from the soccer fields today, it's probably fairly comparable, it sounds like. And I don't know whether you hear the HVAC units on the IBM buildings now or not, or the former IBM buildings now.
Although, that's about a mile and a half from my house, the IBM building.
Well, I think we mean the buildings that are right on the same, just behind where the dome is now?
It was shut for what, 10 years?
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure. Do we have anyone else? Joe?
That's good, that's very good. Thank you very much. I'll make this quick. I know everybody's tired. My name is Joe Impelizieri. I'm actually one of the East Fishkill Soccer Club travel coaches, and up until last year, a baseball coach. And I have three children that are actively involved in East Fishkill sports. I have just a couple of quick questions. First is, regarding the traffic study, what was the window of time that that was taken? Can you share with me the, the month?
The month that the traffic counts were taken?
Yes, and duration?
Uh, yeah. I think I, the timeframe, we counted traffic from 2:00 to 6:00.
Okay.
And, on a weekday, and we counted traffic, that was on a Friday, and we counted traffic on Saturday from 10:00, 10:30 to, to 1:00.
In the month?
10:30 to 2:00.
The month that it was done?
I'll tell you exactly the time. You gotta give me a second, though. If you wanna move on to another question?
Sure, the reason I ask is because the East Fishkill Soccer Complex right there on 52, as many of you know, is very busy. And besides being busy roughly from 5:00 to at least 7:30, 8:00 because of practices, you also have the Saturday craziness that anyone that has had a child in that sport realizes that there's going to be...
Or just drives by.
Yes, or just drives by, right, that realizes that's going to impact. And so I just wanna make sure that when that was done, it was done, to make sure it was done appropriately with the timing of the East Fishkill season, typically fall and spring. The second question I have, if my phone doesn't die. Your domes that you have all over, what is the oldest dome that you have in existence? 40 years, 30 years?
I would say 30.
Are any of these domes with that type of longevity stationed anywhere near the high-tension wires that would be on the east side of this property? And are there any studies that look at the impact of children at that level over the duration of time, and what that may factor into? As a parent, I just wanna know if that's being considered, and should it be considered at all?
I wanna make sure I understand what you mean. You mean, so if a child was coming regularly to the dome to, to play in a tournament, and there are high-tension lines somewhere in the vicinity?
There's some data that looks at exposure to that as electromagnetic fields and what it might do to the body over time. Probably in the adult setting, it's minimal, but in the younger setting, we're looking at children anywhere from probably five and older. And if you're looking at putting a facility in that has that exposure, I just think that should be considered. I'm not quite sure I have an answer, but I think it should be looked at.
Okay.
Well, the high school can't be moved, and I think unless we're building a new high school, that's something that we can't... That's probably a reasonable question. I just don't know the answer, and I think regardless of the answer, it wouldn't change anything. But now we have a chance to impact something, and I just think we should know. Every year, the Memorial Day Tournament for the East Fishkill Soccer Club, you all know how crazy that is. And we are required, as per my conversation with the Memorial Day Director, to pay East Fishkill Police Department to oversee the traffic. So I need to know, and maybe that was mentioned before, I thought maybe you mentioned something regarding that, that in tournaments over 1,000, they would be required to comply with town law, and so I wanna make sure...
I think that more in East Fishkill than any public assembly of 1,000 people more requires a special permit from the town board. It was recently lowered to 1,000 to bring the Stormville Flea Market into control. And I think you've probably, the public's noticed over the last six, seven months, the traffic during that weekend is much better regulated, because now the property owner has to come in with a parking plan, hired police officers, have traffic control. So this facility would be subject to the same thing if they were gonna borrow 1,000, uh, 1,000 people?
1,000 people, and is that typical for a tournament that you would expect? Probably addressing the wrong person. Would 1,000 people be a typical quantification for? Nothing even close to that?
No.
Even trying to compare it to a World Series Little League or something, you don't anticipate that number coming close?
Even if you maximized every field and you had, so when we had 10 fields operating at the same time, Little League fields, and you assume that each team had 15 kids, which is not realistic, it's probably closer to 10, but let's work through worst-case scenarios, 30 times the 10, I mean, you have 300 participants, and so you...
But that participants would be the players, not necessarily the people that would be traveling with them, correct?
That's correct.
So it could be a family member, could have four or five other siblings?
Yeah, you would not, you can't touch 1,000. I mean, you could, I guess, if you had your grandparents come and your uncles and your aunts.
I think that's what the East Fishkill Memorial Day Tournament turns out to be, because every year we have that type of number required.
Well, I can use Baseball Heaven that has 10 fields there. They have 250 parking spots for 10 fields. Those are weekend tournaments that start March 15th and go on till November 15th. Parking lots never fill. And that's in Yaphank, New York.
Okay.
Long Island. Burtle Beach has 10 fields, nine fields. They had 225 parking spots. I think the, the tournament level is dad's coming or mom's coming. It's not, you know, it's not the whole, not, there's a lot of conflict.
Okay, I think we have something in place if that does become a concern, so...
We do, and it would be something that we would expect probably as we gain experience on what these look like, you know. We'd have to throttle it however is appropriate, and if it was approaching that 1,000, then of course, we're gonna look for the special permits to be in place.
Sure. Last question, the comment meaning affordable to East Fishkill for the use of the facilities. Do you have some type of, you must have a number in mind in terms of what a block of time would run to utilize the facility, say, for one hour? I'd like to know if that number, what number that is, in terms of understanding what would be affordable to the teams of the area.
It wouldn't be per facility. I mean, unless someone was really taking over the whole facility, we haven't, we, we don't have that number.
Do you have like an hour of time, like we were renting?
It averages about $10 per kid per hour.
Depending on how many kids, though, correct?
No.
So if a high school team wants to bring in their top six or seven players, and then you're looking at $70 basically for that one hour of time to utilize one of the fields?
Correct.
Seems very low.
That's part of it.
And that's the same number?
But mind you, that's East Fishkill.
So, I just, and guys, I'm sorry, I, I, you need to direct your comments to us, because we'll have the applicant come up and answer these questions. We're not catching your answers for the mic, so I just wanna make sure everybody hears it, so...
So the number on the $10 is related to an East Fishkill discount, correct? Not, not the full?
No, it would be the quantity of persons. We would probably have a minimum of 15 per, per, you know, that... So if you want one person to go in, it's gonna cost you $150 for the hour.
Okay, all right, at least that gives us an idea of what to expect.
And when the agreement is fleshed out, it will be subject to public review before it's approved, so...
Sounds fair.
I just wanna make a couple comments back, you know, drawing the comparison with the, the Memorial Day Tournament, which is great, by the way. The kids went through that, too. But I think what changes that is, one, there isn't sufficient parking, so people are parking on the other side of the road, not always with the approval of the people in those buildings, our friends in the corporate park. Secondly is, if you stop and think about it, all those areas that people can just pull out directly. There isn't like one exit from that field, right?
Yes.
I mean, that's what makes it, it's, it's like, you know, one of these, you know, Middle Eastern, you know...
You know, I'm thinking more of the impact of that number of people coming into our town, and how it affects that day-to-day on that weekend.
But I think the key will be that there is one, two exits, and that, from this site, and that everybody will be parking on-site, and you're not gonna have droves of kids running across the Route 52.
Thank you, thank you very much, and thank you.
Laurie, just a, I, I don't have the exact date of the traffic counts. I can tell you that they were done on a typical weekday and a typical weekend when, you know, when school was in session.
Could you go back and check your records?
I don't have the raw data in front of me. I thought I did. I'll bring, I'll bring that in.
Do you recall whether or not the soccer games were running at the time? Was it during soccer season?
I, I can check on that. I mean, we, you know, there's notes that were kept during the course of that.
We don't have an answer for you yet on the, the timing of the traffic.
But we'll bring that information at the next meeting, okay?
Okay. Can I just, I just wanna make sure we get in, through the mic, the, the costs and what the estimates were, cause I, I don't think everybody could hear, so if you don't mind just coming up and repeating those answers, that would be great.
Yeah, some of the estimates we did were based on $10 per child per hour.
With some sort of minimum per field or something like that?
Right, it normally was probably 15, so $150 per hour for a field, so that if one or two people wanted to rent a field, it wasn't gonna cost them $20 or $30. But it was anticipated to be at the low cost of approximately $10 per hour per child.
Okay. And I, I think we talked a little bit about what, what the tournaments would look like if they went over 1,000, so I think we covered that. High-tension wires, do, do we know, and I guess, Michelle, I'm kinda looking at you because it's more of an environmental thing. I'm not familiar with how far the high-tension, bless you, the high-tension wires would be from the, from the dome itself, or whether or not they would be within the...
I can, I can look into it. I can look in an aerial and see if I can measure off the distance and get some information.
Okay, okay.
They're on the other side of the school.
The property line of our Brightland Solar, and the dome, because we have a big baseball field there, and for about another 300 something...
It's probably about 600 feet from the edge of the dome to where the tension lines are, cause they're on the east side of the dome.
And 300 feet to where someone on the field might be standing?
I mean, it's probably 600 feet to the edge of the dome, and, you know, then depending where you are on the field, it's in excess.
I don't know if anybody has a sense, I have no sense of what the kind of range of high-tension wire...
It's like a square of the distance. It drops off very fast, very fast.
Most of the kids in John Jay will...
It's on the other side of John Jay.
The radiation, that's, that's the good news. Kids on the baseball field will be screaming.
To the gentleman's point, we can't pick up the high school right now, cause it's an existing structure. This is not, so it's worth it, just to make sure we've answered the question.
I'll have to report for John Jay, and they don't blow.
Okay.
Might explain some of the behavior.
I, I would like to point out to the board that while it's certainly a legitimate issue to be addressed, when these power lines are cited, the Public Service Commission exercises jurisdiction over it. That's a technical issue that they review. If there were any official restriction with respect to distance from buildings and structures, that would all be incorporated in right away, that the utility would have had to obtain when the lines were installed. So while certainly something we can find the information output into the record, your approval authority would not allow you to second-guess the Public Service Commission.
So we can't tell them they have to take those wires down?
Yep. So, you know, I just point that out as a legal process issue.
Okay.
Where are those wires?
On the other, the east of John Jay.
On the east side of John Jay.
That was a good, it was a good question, but they're, they're way far away.
Okay. Kathy, do we have anybody else on our list? Okay, Alan, did you wanna come back up?
Wrap it up.
Yeah, I know everybody's tired, so I'll make this quick.
That's all right.
First of all, thank you for, for answering a lot of my questions. In the last discussion that I was at here, they talked about other possible uses for this facility.
Right.
Flea markets, conferences, fairs, whatever they are. Could that make, could we make sure that's been addressed?
Yeah, that would, that would come up. We've had that discussion with the applicant.
Mm-hmm.
And that would be under the public assembly permit process.
Okay.
And that, that probably, you know, there's a lot of things, like let's say they want to use it as a concert.
They have to apply for a permit?
They would have to have a service to, they would have to have agreements with other parking facilities down, and arrange for the people to come over for that, et cetera, and that would all be dealt with on a case-by-case.
Lake City can, we can take all the parking that they want.
Every driveway.
There seems to be a lot of questions regarding... There seems to be a lot of questions regarding the long-term viability of that IBM site, if you read the papers. Wouldn't the applicant want to wait to see if a better property comes, becomes available, maybe closer to eighty-four, that would address a lot of the traffic, water, sewer, et cetera, concerns? Just something I was thinking about. Just a comment in general regarding traffic studies. The traffic studies that were done in the eighties have no basis anymore. I think we could stop talking about the studies that were done in that corridor in the nineteen eighties. Doesn't, there's been so much residential development that the demographics of the area have changed.
I don't think we look at the actual study in, in terms of what it evaluated as the level of service. We just look at it from the magnitude of what that site was originally approved for.
I understand that, but from the, from the last discussions that we've had on a different project, that always seemed to be a constant, so I'm, I'm just trying to bring that up as a, as an issue.
All of the traffic studies are done, in current data.
Thank you.
Traffic counts are taken, you know, they were all taken in recent history, and that's, that's the way they're all-
And to that point, many of the traffic concerns that you're hearing today would be alleviated if South Road was opened up and you could flow as much traffic as possible off and onto eighty-four, where I think the number was about forty percent of the traffic, traffic is expected to come through that Limekill intersection.
Right.
To bring people into the Old Rothell, which is now called South Drive, into the property, which would alleviate a majority of our concerns.
And that's part of why you heard the discussion around the tunnel going on.
Right, and the town, and deeding the property to the town, and the people in Stone Ridge are living that right now. And lastly, what happens if this project doesn't work, which we all hope it does, and it's very successful? If it doesn't work, how do you get rid of the, how do you get rid of the building? And the infrastructure that you've built around it, does it preclude that site from being used from anything else? What about vandalism and security, since it's going to be open till one o'clock in the morning? So on that note, I'll sit down. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, the first and perhaps the most important question is, what about other sites, other places? We, we don't like, we love this site, we love the, the prospect of being in East Fishkill. We've looked at dozens of other sites, there's no perfect site. It'd be great if this site was a little closer here, a little bigger here, but this is a great site and a great town. Accessibility, infrastructure, and the ability to grow is all here. So, so while it might not be perfect, and maybe out there, there is another perfect site, we're ready to go. Millions of dollars is ready to be invested in this project, and hopefully, tens of millions of dollars of benefit in development, good development, healthful development, and benefit to the kids. So we'd love to, to be able to make it happen in East Fishkill, and not someplace else. Security, that's part of our staffing, we have security people on site. Everything is going to be TV monitored, and locked down, and appropriately lit for security purposes. So that's, from that safety standpoint, that's all part of the plan. And as far as what happens if it fails, even though it's not going to, there's no easier site to turn into something else than a site with an air structure. As opposed to a building of any size or structure, the majority of what's built here is an air-supported bubble. It comes down, it gets folded up, it gets taken away, you have a concrete foundation and an astroturf field, notwithstanding the, the decking part, which is a relatively small structure. Other than that, everything else goes away in a weekend, and so it's a, it's a much different situation than a fixed building.
And to add that, to that, I'm doing, in this business fifty-two years. We have sports structures for Jack Custon, Flemington, New Jersey. People travel there three hours to play at his baseball facilities. We, we have domes in, in the most hidden locations, many times because you have land available to a, a company or accept a, a large structure like this. They're all over the place. Never once has one sports structure ever come back for resale. No inventory on used structures, prior use failing in business. So I think that everyone's overlooking the fact that this site is centrally located, much better than Flemington, New Jersey, much better than many of the locations where I have multi-sport domes. I believe this would be a very successful site. We've had to turn away pro baseball players, not to mention names, who wanted part of this. I think the professionals that are investing in this project see this project as the perfect site.
Thank you.
Can I make a comment?
Of course.
You know, I think the, the public, I want to thank the public, I think there's been some good comments. But, no offense, Al, but I'm very pleased these folks like East Fishkill, and I don't think I'm alone in that.
I'm not saying that they should look elsewhere. Elsewhere on that IBM facility would be, I think, more appropriate.
I think this is a great project, and I've been very impressed with how well you guys have worked and presented to us. Thank you.
One comment I have is, I, I know a couple of families that I think go up to Lake George on a regular basis during the summer, I think it was, play softball or something. And I can just see their eyes gleam when they find out they can stay down here and play inside a, a sports dome rather than traveling all the hours up there and spending the money up there. So I, I think there's going to be unintentional, happy families in Duchess County that are going to love to be able to just have their kids go here rather than three, four hours away. I think it's a great thing.
Do we have anyone else from the public who would like to offer comment? Tom, can I trouble you to just walk us through, is there, is there anything with regard to the town board process?
No, that's, that would be throttled by how you proceed here with your public hearings.
Okay, so I think we know there's a few open things that need to be resolved before we can close the public hearing. What's our sense on timing for things like water, sewer, stormwater? I mean, we heard brand-new tonight, the change to the removal of a fifth field outdoors to be a stormwater pond, so.
Yeah, we'll need to get the submittals from Steve, and then maybe have an additional meeting offline. Once we've got a chance to look it over, it's probably, you know, at least, at least a month out before we could be to the point of-
Did you say a month?
Yeah, I think so.
With regard, when, when do you, if it's a month, are you saying with submittals already in hand? Or once you get, receive the next set of submittals?
Probably after getting the submittals, but I think he's close on submitting again.
Yeah, most of what you knew, we submitted this time.
Come on up. I'm going to have you come on up to the mic, we can't hear you, we need-
Steve Frankis again. I mean, the, the major, the work is done, I have, you know, Joe's memos to go through and, you know, check off all the data that he's looking for, but, you know, the, the new pond on our site, the modifications to the existing Western Basin, you know, have, have been done, I know they work. But it's a matter of revising the SWIP and putting the appropriate details, and also the signage that Brendan has requested. So I believe, you know, within a week and a half or so, I can have them revise plans, you know, to start the review process.
Okay. So let me just run back through some of the notes I have, and just make sure that you guys have the same notes that I have. These won't necessarily be in order, they're just in the order that I've written them down. We had a letter from someone who wasn't able to be here tonight, we've given you a copy of that, and I think we've talked about putting some signs on either their site or your site to make sure that traffic's not using their lot. I also think maybe just some information on, if it's not already on the plans, just making sure that the fifteen-foot-tall fencing and the fact that these fields are not just open to anybody to come onto them and play like, like a regular rec field might be. We just want to make sure we're clarifying that, you have a neighbor that's expressing concern, who wasn't able to be here. If we can shore up a little bit better for the public understanding, what the, what the agreement might be with the rec commission, with the school districts and things like that, I don't know how close you are to some of those agreements, but if we could just have the better feel for that, I think that would be helpful to us. I also think we need to have the conversation about, and John, maybe I'm going to look at you for this, to talk to Scott about the sidewalks, and just making sure we can get pedestrians. We know where the destinations will be for the typical folks that might be walking off this site. And some of them are across the road, some of them are at the high school. I just want to make sure that if, if we can improve the sidewalks, maybe even beyond the limits of this site, and just see what we can do there, I think that's important.
Take a look at it.
Several people mentioned that. Certainly, we've talked about water and sewer, knowing, making sure we know where that's going. Michelle, was there anything you felt we needed to do with lighting?
No, I would just like to, I mean, I don't know, is Musco going to provide you with new photometrics for the new type of lighting?
Oh, no, the new, the new type of lighting is, you know, they don't have their specs yet, so we're, we're going with the current plan, and we have the full lighting, the information that's on, I think, sheet thirteen. So, you know, the only thing I need to do is take the lights off for that fifth field. But the lighting plan that we have meets all the appropriate specifications for, I guess, no spillage, for lack of a better term. So, but they are working on this technology, you know, to get it available in the marketplace. They have one installation, I believe, down in the Maryland area. But, you know, it's, by the time the outdoor fields are built, that's what will be available, so.
I mean, I can call Musco, I've talked to them before on other projects, and let's see if they can give you some sense of what the, you know.
And then I'm not sure it came up tonight, but I know that in the past, we've touched, but making sure there's adequate lighting in the overflow lots, and the ability to get pedestrians to and from the building safely in those overflow lots, especially late at night.
Correct.
Okay. All right, again, I'm just reading back through my notes. Did we need to do anything additional with the visual renderings? Was there an additional view from the, from the Four Seasons area?
I can talk to Chris at Jason about.
Okay, we'll see if we can get a better, a better picture of you, what the dome may look like from, from the Four Seasons subdivision, if we can. We talked about the drainage and getting that information, so there's the parking we've talked about. I know in the past, Michelle, we've done a few things with just looking at the HVAC, and maybe this, actually, I can't, maybe this is Joe, the HVAC equipment, and knowing just what the sound spillover would be at edge of property or something like that, just being able to get an assessment of that, to give us a feel. And I can't remember what application we did that on, but, but decibel levels are sometimes hard to interpret. If you can compare it to like a common everyday sound, like a phone ringing or something like that, just tell us what it might sound like at the edge of the property, I think that would be helpful. Timing the traffic counts, Brendan, when during the, the year did we do that? And where the soccer tournament, soccer, weekend soccer tournaments playing? We'll see what we can find on the high tension wires, but honestly, I think they're pretty far away from this site, so I, I'm not sure that there'd be any empirical studies or anything we might be able to look at, but we can, we can look into that. And you'll let us know again, as you're talking with the rec commission, of their specific changes to the hourly rates, anything more, anything significant beyond what we've already talked about tonight? We'll just want to make sure we understand that. Does anybody else have any notes or anything that I missed with regard to what else we would follow up with?
When do you think we'll have the next meeting?
From what Joe said, it sounded like he's, he's looking for, from your next submission, Joe, you're thinking about a month to be able to get through all the numbers and make sure we've got everything squared away.
Sometime October timeframe.
So our first meeting in October is October seventh?
There's no chance of getting it to the end of September?
September sixteenth is our next meeting. Would you guys be able to get your next submission into us?
He said it's within a week.
What?
Steve said within a week and a half.
And again, it's really based on Joe's last memo, I mean, it's really a lot of housekeeping items. I mean, the major stuff I have done, so it's just making sure I, you know, answer all of his questions, so. Maybe we could be on tentative, at least from the sixteenth, assuming we get everything in, and Joe has, you know, the time to review it.
I, I think we're further along than we have been, I just know on these, some of these submittals till now, we've usually had like a meeting in between, where we've been able to go over stuff. You know, we haven't brought it back to the planning board, but we've had that additional meeting and worked things out.
Okay.
So that's kind of what I'm looking at.
What about the, what about the utilities, water and sewer, and that, I mean, are we, how close are we on things like that?
Yeah, I think we, I believe we are.
September sixteenth isn't that far away, so.
Yeah, I think we'll have a better handle on it on September sixteenth than we do right now, so.
So Joe, if this, if the submittal is in within a week, that gives you about three weeks to go through it, is that not enough time? Or, I know it's a lot, it's, it's a big change to the SWIP, so I'm not trying to-
Yeah, I mean, it depends, you know, when we actually get it.
Within a week?
By the end of next week, we'll have it.
The end of next week is in a week, that's almost two weeks.
I'll get it.
Okay. It's, it's a lot to, for the professionals to go through, so I don't want to compress that time, and we're going to end up with another adjournment and that sort of thing.
What about public notice again?
There, there won't be public notice again, because we'll adjourn tonight, and we'll announce tonight when, when it will be back on the agenda, but our, our agendas are also posted online, you can find that information.
Are there any nights you're not available, Al?
I'll be yours.
All right.
So if we have, if we have it to you before next Wednesday, would September sixteenth work?
Yeah, we can, we can make it.
Okay.
We'll make it work.
So we'll adjourn you to September sixteenth, but please, please try to get it and everything we need within a week. I know it's, it's a lot, but it's also a lot for us to review, so. Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn the Hopewell Sports Dome public hearing to September sixteenth?
So moved.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
And I'd just like to, again, thank the public, you guys are great about coming out and raising issues with us and helping us work through these, so we appreciate your feedback. And for those who may know people that weren't able to be here tonight, again, September sixteenth, this will be back on. Thank you very much to the applicants as well, it was a great presentation.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I have a motion to adjourn, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.